Council early work session. It is six o'clock. Today is July the eighth. And like you mentioned, all council members are present. These are near exciting times tonight. We're going to receive a presentation and discussion of general fund budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
And before Heather gets started, I do just want to mention a couple of things. First, the general fund budget, of course, is the one we spend the most time on. We have to adopt a tax rate, go through all those procedures to do that. And most departments are funded by the general fund. You may all recall that in the past, Ken has cautioned everyone that it's a city that's getting close to build out. That revenues at some point will plateau. This is one of those years when it really feels like we're reaching plateau. So Heather's going to go through some information with the current budget year and next budget year. It is going to be a little difficult. It's going to have to be lean. We're going to have to look at making some changes in the future as well, because I'm afraid we are getting to that point where we're really feeling the effect of the plateau, feeling the effect of the state legislature and not being able to raise the tax rate over a three pointer, depending on the calculation, how much you can raise taxes. And then sales tax has flattened. So that's not with us, just us, that's statewide right now. Sales tax is flat. So with that precursor, I'll turn it over to Heather, let her go through that, and then we'll have some discussions after that.
First, could I start off with where we are now looking at revenues? So, you know, we had our 2025 budget. Part of our budget process is to estimate where we're going to end up at the end of the year. So that is what we have here. So one of the, you know, one of our most significant revenues, property tax, of course. And we are expecting to be, you know, to be under by $252,000. That's mainly because, you know, at the time that we were budgeting, we did not have a certified role yet. And there was, at the time, there were still nine percent of the evaluations that were under review. So this kind of, you know, a best guess at the time. So that's where we're going to be, just projection. The other big chunk is sales tax. Paul has said we're kind of plateauing. When we were budgeting last year, we were experiencing a five percent increase over the previous year. Now we're actually seeing one percent. So we're going to be under budget in sales tax also. And then the other big hitter is the interest income. At the time that we were doing budget last year, interest rates were 5.3%. And it's gradually gone down over the year, being only at four percent. So that's causing a decline in our revenue collection or our interest income. So in all our total revenues, we expect to be seven, 675,000 under budget. So now we'll look at expenditures line. We, you know, go through the same process. Part of our budget is to try to estimate where we're going to be at the end of the year. We look at salaries fairly closely, too. And so we expect our wages and benefits would be under 422,000. That's mainly just from turnover, you know, you know, tenured employees leaving and the people less experienced or, you know, filling their spots. That's kind of netted with overtime and then this city contribution, that's our board fifty seven contributions. For benefits, we're going to be under budget 170,000 related to insurance. And then team royalties by 36,000 and unemployment. That is something that we just kind of have. We budget 10,000 every year. Sometimes we need it and sometimes we don't. Then our supplies and step service, supplies and services category. Major differences are changes in our estimates from our original budget is from streets. There is a 2024 overlay project that was scheduled to be in 2024. It actually started in 2025. So it's included along with the 25 overlay project that was budgeted. And then we have in building and fleet maintenance, we have a generator and electrical upgrades that were budgeted in 2025. It's going to be delayed into the next fiscal year. So in total, we're going to be under budget expenditures, 1,063,000. And so what does that mean? Or our bottom line, we had budgeted 1,138 on our deficit. We're actually expecting to come in at $736,000 deficit. I would change our fund balance to 37% of expenditures to 46%. And then last year in fiscal '24, at the time of our audit, our final fund balance was 51% of expenditures. And then we'll start moving into this year or next year, what we're budgeting now. We are expecting revenues. No, we're expecting, I'm sorry, excuse me. Our fund balance, we're expecting a net deficit in 2026 just from our base budget of 1.9 million dollars. And then if we include any supplementals that have been requested, that would put us at 2,634 dollars in deficit. Making it like 35% of our expenditure fund balance on the base budget in 32. So we'll look at revenue. There's three items that comprises about 90% of our revenue budget. That is property taxes, taxes and franchise fees. And we're expecting in total of this 36,000 dollars over last year's budget. So we're just comparing the differences between this year's base budget to last year's. I'm sorry, this year, this year's proposed budget against last year's budget. So in total, revenue is only going to be 36,000 dollars more than last, what was budgeted last year.
Excuse me. You've revised the property tax revenues and the sales tax revenues down. Proposed budget for '26, you've increased them. What, what's the justification for the increase? What, what's the basis?
Well, for property tax, it's all based upon our certified or preliminary role at this point. So I'm using the preliminary role.
Adjusted preliminary role, so you would start with the 14,275?
No, that's just the property tax revenue.
Right.
I don't start there. We start with the actual role that has all the taxable values. And then I determine based upon the preliminary role, what our revenue will be based upon.
Our tax rate.
Tax rate.
So.
Considering, you know, any new revenue or.
Right, but what we, once the protests have finalized and we get a revised number from the district, would we not use that as our basis for?
We don't get that until July 25th, and that's a certified role. And it was, they still have, they are required to review 90% of the values that are being processed, protests.
Right.
So at the certified role, we won't have all of it. It really is a process that goes on.
Okay, so then the base for the proposed budget of '26 at 14,969 is, is what? The current assessed value that's on the rolls right now?
Right.
Before any adjustments.
With some expectation that it's going to continue to go down a little bit. So we started at eight percent increase in our taxable roles compared to last year. And they are, you know, get providing reports weekly to let us know how many are still under review, how many have been completed. And so I predict where we're going to end up at right now, since I don't have the certified role at this point. So just using the trends of how it.
And that's kind of leading to my point. We're, we're, we're adjusting our budget for '25 on a downward trend based on the numbers that have been provided thus far. But the next year's budget proposed, we're increasing that number. What, what, what gives us confidence in an increase? Why would we not want to take the revised budget estimate from '25 moving to '26 and use that baseline?
Because the taxable values have increased from last year.
You're talking about the 14,5 as a baseline?
Well, if the, if the property values have increased, why are we seeing an estimate revised downward?
Well, that was, that was based upon the '24.
I'm sorry.
That was based upon the '24.
That was the original estimate.
Twenty-four.
And what we're, we're budgeting with now, and the '24, that's a tax year. So that would be budgeted for '25 fiscal year. What we're looking at now is the tax year '25. So it's a whole new evaluation.
But your '25 estimate, the 270, the 14,275 is based on '25, right? Or is that using? This is where I'm getting confused. If we're going down in our estimate now, why are we going up in our proposed? Why would we not start at the lower basis for a conservative viewpoint?
Because it's all based upon the property tax values. And so for '25, we were looking at the '24 tax year values.
Right.
And then.
And that's where you got your 14,527. Okay.
And we're, and we're, we are getting daily reports, monthly reports about even, you know, the last tax year of what's been protest and what they expect our current levy to be. And so for '25, that's, the estimate is based upon that being 98 and a half percent.
Right, so we're going to be at 14,275 based on those adjusted numbers. Right. Okay, so I'm there. I fully understand that piece of it. Where I'm having a problem is what, what is going, what is causing us to jump from the 14? These numbers, look, the 14,527 to the 14,969, we've already seen a decrease this year. What's the expectation for '25s to be higher? Is it because the trend is higher?
Because the appraised value is higher.
Okay, I'm sorry, and I hate to belabor this thing, but if the appraised values are higher, we should start with the 14,275 because that's the adjusted numbers for this year, for '24's numbers, what they're actually taxing on.
Yeah, but the appraisal is on the '25. When we're taxing for the fiscal year '26, it's the '25.
And your, and your budget on '25 was based on the '24. I'm, okay, I'm finally clarified in my head where you are.
It is a five percent increase over our actuals this year. So for, by law, we're limited to 3.5% going from 14,275 to 14,969. That's a five percent increase.
So we'd have to.
Which is a pretty big increase.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, there's other considerations, the new, new values.
New.
I've always had.
Included in there.
I'd love to see it when we would actually do our new budgets against where we actually ended up. I mean, I understand going back to last year's budget, but that was a budget. So showing the delta from where we actually ended is also a good metric, maybe add a column in there. You know, because for reality, we missed, missed a revenue by 700,000. But yet we're funding all that revenue plus work. Part of it's explained there. But go on, we're just.
It did go, of course, you know, protests have been at an all time high the past several years. And generally, when you got your certified tax rule, there was still some left, but not as many as there was. And, and it's, you're always going to get knocked down from that. So that does make that difficult.
Thank you.
So this is more information about the property tax evaluation.
Could be your R rate.
So, you know, we're looking at, you know, like a 24 or five year average. And this is just the evaluation. This isn't how much the revenue or the tax rate is. You know, you can see it's about, over the 25 year average is 3.8%. If you look at just the last five years, it's increased, you know, one, 6.7%. And then the previous five, 4.7, and then the previous five before then, just that one percent. So, you know, down here is where it reflects like how our appraisals came in, you know, the increases over time. So we saw, like I mentioned, when we first got our first preliminary role, it started out at like eight percent over last year's. And as those protests are being reviewed, it goes down the taxable values. I estimated, you know, that we would be, like whenever we, I got a report last Thursday, and at that time it was 4.6%. So I'm estimating like the next couple of weeks, it's going to continue to decline a little bit to be 4.4%. And with the, this tax, you know, rate, with these values, we don't expect to have to change the property tax rate. We don't just remain constant as we had it last year. Looking at sales tax revenue. So as we were looking at the budget last year, we were seeing a 5% increase over the previous year. And so when it was budgeted, we budgeted, I think, I believe it's 6.8%. We're actually experiencing a 1.1% increase over last year. And this graph illustrates the percent by our geographical areas that we kind of watch. It's the E-trend. Really busy, but it kind of shows, this is a graph. It's a 12, it's our sales tax rolling 12 knot average. And so this blue line is where we were last year when we budgeted. And then you can see it's just been a steady decline. And then related to our interest income, it's a similar situation. We started, when we started budgeting last year, we were at 5.5% interest rate. We had slowly declined as of this past June. We were experiencing, you know, 4.25 to 4.5. And the feds do, they do expect the feds to do a few reductions. Maybe one in September, 25 basis points, and in December also 25 basis points. So in our predictions for the next year, we're looking at a lower interest rate. So this is our base budget for this year. We have personnel, which includes wages and benefits. We're expecting to increase it by 400 or 946,000. And then for supplies and services, we're expecting to see a decline of 365,000. And then we'll have, in our base budget, there are capital L light items. And that's over here on the right, it's a copier and floor storage for IT. Point of this, I mentioned before, there was a generator and electrical upgrades that were originally budgeted for '25. It's been delayed and we're having, it's going to be 715,000. And then we have a street department, standard, and two art department workmen on our equipment replacement schedule, and it's included. With that, I'm going to let, invite Kim to talk about compensation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd love to discuss compensation with y'all today. First couple slides you might have seen before is our compensation strategy. So we aim to be mid-market positions. We're, we have a range and allows us to adapt to different market conditions. Thirty percent length between min and max for public safety. It's just the minimum and the maximum on the pay schedule. And 40% length between min and max in general. The reason for this is the, typically general has a 40% width. It's a smaller width or length with benefit strategy, top coming back. And ultimately, we want to keep our employees, recruit good ones. These are market cities, they were just updated fiscal year. And market cities and compensation strategies are going to be reviewed every five years. Turnover attrition data, so we have fiscal year 2020 to October 24 to current. Voluntary terminations, eight involuntary, four, total is 12. The percentages there are still looking good. We're at 7.5 for the year currently. So we're doing really well in regards to turnover. A turnover data by department, you'll see here, there's been improvement in fire, which is excellent. And in regards to turnover, we had two in finance, one in HR. We have one in maintenance, retirement, parks and rec one, police four, and one in streets and two in utilities. These are individuals who have met their end of period. Years of service ending this year '24. We actually went up a couple months, but you can kind of remember that a little bit. Eight years, 11 months, which is about four months more than last year. Okay, CPI data, there was an increase of 0.6%, which is better than previous year. So this is food, gas, what kind of good stuff we like. ECI, employment cost index. So on this side here is private industry. This is state and local government nationwide data, 4.3%. Let's see, yeah, 4.3% nationwide for government sector. They don't have that for this area, so I have to look nationwide for government. 4.4% in the last 12 months, ending in March for private sector here in the DFW area. And they haven't updated their data yet from March. Proposed salaries for fiscal year '24, or actually, that's '25, '26, I'm sorry about that. Total budget increase, 3.5%. This ranges are within market for public safety and exempt pay schedule. Non-exempt schedule will be adjusted, so each grade is 5% apart. What that means is several years ago, two grades were inputted in the middle that were 2.5%, which is not, which is against our practices. And by making sure they're 5% apart, it'll allow for decreased compression issues. And by making sure they're five percent apart, it'll allow for decreased compression issues and make sure people fall where they need to do in the market. And part-time positions are going to be adjusted as needed, the old position. This will address cost of living adjustment, as well as market adjustments and compression. There's two slides on police officer, because I want to explain my thought process with you. This right here is what was proposed last year and what we did. And you'll see the red line has been market, this is with overtime. So and you'll see the cities are different. Here, they're not with our new market cities. You have down here HP rank sixty six point six percent, percentage of dollar median, negative four thousand, negative five percent. So, all right, we're doing good. If you look on the other side, this is fiscal year twenty twenty six, ranges, so seventy four thousand, you'll see there. And you'll notice that the, we're at fifty eight point three percent, so we're still mid-market. But you'll also notice that the percentage and median market is now negative two percent versus negative five percent. This is interesting, so let's go ahead and explain. So you see here, this is the same graph that was on the other side, I just wanted you to be able to compare. What I am proposing is to actually move them up a grade, to move to seventy eight, six, six, eight. Those be above mid-market, which is typically not what we do. We typically want them to be mid-market. But it addresses the negative two to negative seven. So it gives us a little bit of wiggle room for next year. Also, I'm having a very difficult time recruiting for police officers. I've spent money in advertising and in three weeks, we've gotten like no advocates that are qualified sworn. So I'm not saying that this is going to fix that, but it might help us remain competitive next year. And I won't have to do a big jump and hit to the budget.
Last year, the chief was close to half million dollars under on his expenditures for personnel. I mean, it was a big, big amount, half million, just police department. This year, you're like one forty. And so obviously, we're retaining people, your turnover is a lot less, so what we did moved this up.
We currently have five vacancies, two recruits, three sworn, we're trying to fill. And I have, I don't.
Five opening, Chief Stewart leaving, actually, we have two in the academy of those five. Conditional offer for another, a third person, and the two are, it looks like we're going to move an internal employee, so we're going to keep that open dispatch center, from my dispatch center. So that'll, that's going to skew that number for a few months, because he's a, he's a good kid who want, deserves a chance. And then the last position of those five is just difficult to decide whether or not we want to send another person to an academy or if we can actually recruit someone who's sworn already and save a ton of time and money. Because academy cost is wages plus their time gone, which is about six months, and then another six months of training on top of it. So we're close. The goal, real, real goal is to keep them, that's it.
And to be able to get sworn applicants, and that is something we're not, we're sending individuals through the academy, which is pretty costly, because we are not receiving sworn applicant.
But the pay were, you know, were pretty high in the range compared to all the other cities. So I don't think we're losing people to pay, maybe lose people to other things.
How many of the officers do we ever have?
Thirty-two minus five.
Thirty-two in one month, or six months, ten percent.
Less two to Little Elm, who was not one of our comparable cities, they pay more. They also have another perk in their, in their process with take home cars. Those two officers were real good friends, and they went, they went, for what they tell me, Kim has the stats on on departure stuff, but from what we know, they're, they're very tight kids. Another kid who was here for a very long time, hired from another agency, he left to go to Burleson. He lives five minutes from there, he's been driving for the last seven years back and forth.
That makes sense.
Okay, and then Chief Stewart retired.
And we have one that went to Florida.
Yes, one went to Florida with a twenty thousand dollar bonus. So that's less five in
Literality.
Five months that happened, so.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, I'm just thinking from where you were last year to where you are this year, it's huge improvement, okay? And I don't know whether you go selectively to work on retention with dollars as opposed to recruit dollars. Follow me?
Duty teaching officer, lady at mid-market, no change. I'm in a straight-up position on the exempt pay schedule, mid-market, no change, doing pretty good. A crew leader, so this is one of those changes on the non-exempt schedule. So you'll see that we're at thirty three point three percent current and to get on a fifty percentile rate. Next, my stuff up. Any additional questions?
So again, with the base budget for twenty twenty six, looking at personnel. We have, as you can see, a nine hundred and forty six thousand dollar increase. And on the right, it can summarize this, what the majority of that increase represents. One of it is an increase in the budget, three point five, as Ken had mentioned. Another big one is insurance. Related to the insurance, our, you know, we get an annual renewal of our premiums. And our current provider originally came at thirty percent based upon our experience. And they later revisited and provided us with a twenty five percent increase. And so at this point, we are submitting RFQ to get to get some, I guess, or bids, or, you know, different plans by different providers, hopefully. See how that compares, but right now for our budget, we're facing our increase by a seventeen percent increase in premiums.
How much did the insurance go up last year?
Eight percent at the end.
Eight percent with the credit?
It was eight percent with a one point five percent credit. And historically, it's been around that or less. This year, well, last couple of years, we've had a hundred percent loss ratio in claims. This year was a hundred and thirty percent loss ratio. Our broker, Higginbotham and Associates, feels like with some adjustments, we will hopefully be able to get to that seventy percent number. It's pending, because we're out.
It's a big jump.
Sorry, total employee count for the city?
A hundred and sixty employees, if we're fully staffed.
What percentage do we cover?
I don't have that, I have to get it.
I just didn't know what what they contribute versus what.
Oh, that, a hundred percent for our HSA plan, ninety percent for employee only coverage, ninety percent for our HSA plan for employee only coverage, eighty-five percent for dependent coverage on both.
So this is just an overview again of our expenditures, including the supplementals. And it just kind of takes us to our next area of reviewing supplementals with you, with each department. So we're going to start off with the police department first.
So no, not for this, those are always boring numbers, right? We get the fun stuff here, shooting stuff. Lot cameras this year, we're asking to, you know, they've been a very good success for us. I give those independent briefings or meetings to council to tell you what they've done for us. So we've asked or are asking for three additional cameras, primarily all for residential area in the city. Castlewood, both sides, and then Highland Shores and twenty-four ninety-nine this side, cover three more, more. And spot cameras, in a nutshell, you've seen this probably eight or ten different times. The thing that we have access to, what people use them for, to solve crimes primarily, okay? We do get warrant hits occasionally, mostly our warrant. I think the best story that I can always tell towards that is the girl who is not, having shoes, having some issues in life and wanted to, was considering wanting to harm herself. Dad calls us, gives us a license plate, where we'll put it in the system right away. And because we have the cameras throughout the system, we're able to locate the car and the girl safely, so. Here's our current locations, or at least the shops, I'm sorry. The biggest reason that we put them in was for our parks. So we use them as an alarm system for our parks for everybody who goes in. So this year, a new additional, we're asking for some equipment, and I brought in Travis, you got shields, right?
I got a shield, not a shield, yeah, a shield. Go ahead and go to the next slide, sir, there we go. So requesting two ballistic shields, the current ones we have are just rated for pistol caliber rounds. The ones we're requesting are for rated for rifle rounds. You know, with the world today, a lot of active shooters, and the threats we're up against, we're all carrying rifles these days. So we just want to know something with a little bit better protection for barricaded people, suicidal people, active shooters clearing buildings. This gives officers more protection. So the shields we're requesting are the same size, they're a little heavier. They're going to have a viewport and a light, so you can light it, light up a whole room at nighttime, a thousand lumens. And just give officers more protection when they're making entry to buildings. Currently, we have two shields, well, we have four shields on patrol, and next to two shields we're requesting are going supervisors' cars. One in the sergeant vehicle and one in the corporal vehicle. Anytime we have one of those high threat calls for service, those officers are going to the scene. So they'll always be ready for whatever threat they would have. Officer down, or any type of the situation, we can extract somebody with the protection shields.
Do we know a lot of these threats, out of curiosity?
Uh, of which one specifically, what we need to deploy the shield?
Just a list of those things, yeah.
So for suicide people, we do have those, where you deployed it recently. Felony stops, we get those for stolen vehicles or anyone with felony warrants, I think we can deploy these as well. We use them often, I don't know, I couldn't give you an exact
Oh, no, I just, I mean, that's what I, doing more dust, okay, that.
Too often, that's the word.
I'm sure that is, I just, I mean, is it collecting dust or being used, or being used? That's what's my question, basically.
Any questions, sir?
So I'm going to talk about Blue Voice, it is a software that our officers are currently using, that other law enforcement agencies are using across the United States. It's a software that you use on your phone, your computer, in your car to basically put all of your department policies, all of city ordinances, any kind of Texas law, criminal law, traffic law forms, gate codes, things like that, all on the officer's either personal phone or their patrol issued phone. What we put into this is kept in a secure, closed AI program that Blue Voice has to where, you know, general order eight oh seven is X, Y, Z. I don't even know what general order eight oh seven admittedly is, but if I have an issue on a crime scene or if I'm on a call for service and a resident has a complaint or a problem that we're there for dispatch to, you know, help them out with, say it's scooters, hot topic, right? I can type in scooter, just scooter, and it'll pull up the city ordinance or anything that has that word with the AI software that's in that program, and it pulls that up, I'm able to access a PDF version of it, get that on hand, instead of, oh, let me call you back, you know, whoever, you know, your dispatch to deal with, and get that information to them quicker. Supervisors are able to look up policy, any of the city policies on employee related injuries, all the paperwork and stuff associated with that is there, get answers faster and quicker. It also learns from the searching that you do. Another aspect component of it that I think is valuable is training. I get a report every month, what officer's searching, doesn't tell me which officers are searching, but it tells me top five, ten things have been searched. Everybody's searching for scooter ordinance, well, maybe we need to put a training out for the guys at shift. That way, it's actionable, it's there now, and we can, you know, get our officers better prepared out there. Currently, we're part of a pilot program with Blue Voice entering the market in Texas. They're more up northeast, so we're using the program for free right now. We also have a grant pending, but that is the yearly cost for Blue Voice. No, that's all right, I think that was probably what it had.
Did very well, yes, very well with on the line.
Anyways, try to see if there's anything I missed on there. Another big thing, yes ma'am?
You said that on their personal phones as well, how secure is that?
So it is login and password, so you log in and you put your password in every time. Once you close the app out, whether you kill the app or you just get out of it, it's
Does it save it, like the password thingy on my phone?
No, I've got that turned off, you could do that if you wanted to.
Okay.
But I make it so where if I get into my phone, pull it up, and then I just close the app and I get my email or whatever, get back in, it's going to ask me for my password and
And that's department-wide?
Yeah, it's for every phone.
Every phone, password?
Well, I'm sorry, every user that we have in our system. So whether they're logging in from a tablet, whether that's department issued or at home. I have a cadet that starts academy next week, she's got it on her phone, because we don't issue her a department phone. So it's the same thing that she's going to have to do when she goes through and starts learning all that stuff. Instead of us having to give her stacks of books, she's got it all on her phone. The last thing I want to touch on that I don't think is on here. Yeah, so the analytics right there, I was scratching my head at this when I asked Blue Voice how much time we've used. Basically, what they're saying, based on the last two months of usage, our officers have been able to save about ninety-five hours. What they do and how they get that information and get that number is they run a search for whatever the officers are searching for, so it's good ordinances, and they go off of if they were to just run that comparable to Franklin Legal on their online website, and the time comparison based off of Blue Voice, and that's how they compile that and contrast how much time they've saved through that, so.
So the neat thing about this too is we got a chance to play with it, I wasn't going to even expose it to ask for it unless the officer said, wow. And they, that's where it ended up in this point, saying they're the ones using it, they're the ones who are saying, can we keep this, chief? I just had a chance to ask them again, as a group, half the department yesterday in the training, in the same room. It was emphatically, yes, it's made our lives a lot easier, so. We're sitting on that six thousand dollar grant right now, a safety grant that we enter with the city all the time. We're hoping that it might even be a zero bound, zero cost for us this year. It'll be an ongoing cost after, if we keep it, we can always decide to change it all we want. Travis, again, Sergeant Flowers.
This is a forty millimeter impact mission launcher. People might think of it as a grenade launcher, forty millimeters, so forty mic, mic for your military guys. Holds six rounds, but we would use this for a less lethal option for patrol. So we currently have one in our inventory, requesting a second one. For, since we have one, it's in sergeant vehicle, the second one would go into the corporal truck. That just spreads out our area of coverage throughout the city and reduces response time. So if we have someone in a high threat situation, or lethal force would not be, you don't want to use that, we can use a forty millimeter impact mission launcher. We use these projectiles, it is an inert collapsible gel foam round, shoots three hundred feet per second, forty meters. It's way harder than a beanbag round, it's highly effective. These rounds, you can also, they're pretty versatile, smoke, marking rounds, CS, OC, it's very versatile. So you see a lot of the riots and things on TV, crowd control, they're using a lot of these single and multi launchers.
And those rounds are used primarily to stun the individual?
So if they're not complying with commands and they have some type of weapon, they have to drop that weapon.
And then using the live run?
Correct.
And how, how often has that been used in the last?
So I think
Deployed, because
Or deploy.
Deployed, we deploy it semi often too. So just the bringing it out and displaying it kind of carries a lot of people, like, wow, what is that, and your point, and I mean
So that's what deploy means?
Yes, yeah, taking it out and being ready to use it, so
Okay, that, okay, I didn't know that.
Well, no, and I love, this is why, this is why I love doing these presentations in front of council and whatnot, but you'd be so amazed but you'd be so amazed at these men and women who on, in situations where we have the opportunity to respond, the thought process that goes into pulling this out, the thought process that goes to pulling an AR-15s, the thought process for the rifles, the thought process for the tasers. Every single thing usually is brought into that decision-making process and then communication to use the right, maybe hopefully just the display of it calms the situation down. In most of our cases, it has. But this is just, again, this is a second one added to our current inventory so that we do have it available under stressful situations.
And also whenever this one's being used for training, it's out of service. So the people on the street don't have it. That's our less lethal options. We have somebody that's like suicidal or something, this is what we go to. And we have somebody with lethal cover, but then we can also have somebody else.
Jay gets to, our commander, McCallie, gets to talk about the drone program. Just, you know, we have considered this years ago already, but this is the first time we have an opportunity to bring it to your attention. And I just want to re, in the last six months, we've relied on agencies, two agencies already, to deploy theirs to our city on three occasions. So it's really a big deal, neatest thing here that can lean on before Jay gets into his presentation, the tax note, Heather can answer that question. But bottom line is that we have, sorry for stealing some of your thunder, Jay, but we have an aging Skywatch tower that was, through a grant and part of city money, bought over 10 years ago. It was projected to be replaced next year. And a tax note money was set aside for another purchase to renew that product. The current, the process back then was about $90,000 when that one was purchased. Today, they're over $250,000. So in checking with the tax people and all the auditors and whatnot, we can use that money that was already projected in the tax note to purchase drone programs or some, a program that would enhance or be at least the minimum, if not better. I think you'll very clearly, clearly see and understand that having drones or that program available over the Skywatch is more valuable and versatile than that.
Yeah, the thing with the Skywatch, it gives us that elevated platform, especially when we have special events and things. We can put somebody up there that can see everything. You know, they're 20 feet up, the drone's going 200 feet up. It could go as high as 400 feet up and can see much more area. And we can zoom in on people and see what's going on. So it gives us enhanced situational awareness for first responders, for sure. Because we can get up over, you know, an event that's happening, fire, an accident. We can get it up in the air really quickly. It's way cheaper than the new Skywatch. And of course, we've used it for special events. You know, we tried it out out there to see how that worked out. And we didn't fly it around, we just put it up on a tether to see how it worked out there. And it worked really well. And career development opportunities, the guys are super excited about it and they want to be certified as a drone operator.
10 of 30 people sign up for it that quick, so.
And these are the different types of drones and we will be looking at the quadrocopters. Night vision and thermal imaging would be very helpful. Because typically you would use like a handheld night vision. But we can put a drone up in the air. If we have a missing person or something, or somebody running from us, we can put that up in the air and we can find them really quickly. The ones we're looking at also have loudspeakers and spotlights. One of the spotlights, 100,000 lumens, it's incredibly bright. And then speaker, I didn't think you'd be able to hear it, but we did a demonstration with it and you could hear it clearly. And you could talk to somebody on the ground, which would really help on a suicidal person, you know, barricaded person, that type of situation. Benefits for police department, you know, things I've already said, the search and rescue, crime scene, something we need, like there's a fatality in an accident, we need drone video of that for the VA. Of course, with the pursuit, if somebody takes off from us, you know, we don't have to chase them. We can put the drone up and we can zoom in on them, see exactly where they're at and get assistance from DPS or another city if we need to. And then of course, if there's an active shooter or a major incident, we can put it up to watch that. Benefits for fire department as well with grass fires, structure fires, that sort of thing, where they can use thermal imaging to see where the hot spots are in the building. Of course, hazardous materials and, you know, for officer safety and firefighter safety situations.
Actually, before you move on, the benefits of the unit itself, I noticed, other than in the fire, access, structural fires and wildfires. Do these, are these drones, could they be used in school situations? Sent into the school without providing personnel and try to scope out?
Yes, sir, we had.
So totally we can use them?
Yes, we had a recent incident where we had a person who was suicidal, well armed, and his spouse left the house. Luckily, she got out. What was, what was going on? And there was a shot fired. We're not going to go into that house. He's the only one in there. He could be ambushing officers if we go back in there. So what he did, or we did is we called a neighboring agency to use their drone. And they put a large drone up over the house so they could scope out the backyard because they thought the shot may have come from the backyard. He wasn't back there. Then they sent a little drone like this, just like this, into the house and flew this around the house and found him in the house. So no officer had to go in to, you know, put themselves in jeopardy. And this thing with the shields too, just to get this into the house, we need to get up to the door to fly it in. And we didn't have a rifle rated shield to get up to the door. So we used the pistol shield, but the rifle rated shield in this could have served the same purpose. So yeah, it protects officers in that situation. And this could also go into a school and fly around the school as well. The ones that we're looking at are by GPS build, they're the ones that make them. We put together a package of different drones that could do all things that we would need to be using it for. Night vision, infrared, flying inside of a building and another. And for that package and the yearly annual maintenance fee? $90,000. So $30,000 for the annual fee, including all the training. And we can train as many people as we want with that package. We can taper that down and try to get a lower price package for that. But this one covers everything on the drone. So if we crash it, they replace it. And if we have new people coming on, new firefighters coming on that want to be trained, we can get them trained as well.
What's the annual license fee after training, ma'am, on an annual basis?
The license is due in two years. It's $175 to take the test. It's typically $600 for the training to get you prepared for the test. But with that, $30,000, it covers all of them, as many people as we want to send. But still, we, every two years, we have paid $175 for the test. Unless we're still on that maintenance program, then they will continue to cover all of that.
Right, but an ongoing annual impact is about $175 for, under, for test?
No, because the, $60,000 was for purchase, the drones outright. The $30,000 is just for the maintenance and training. So the $30,000 per year will cover all training and all maintenance and service.
So it's an ongoing basis, the 30?
The 30 is, yeah.
About $2,000 for 10 people every two years.
What's the lifespan of the drones?
The lifespan, I don't know. The service contract will keep fixing anything that breaks on them, but at some point, you're, you know, we'll probably need to replace them.
How many drones and which types were included in that 90,000?
How many drones?
How many drones and which type?
So this drone is the large drone that we had out at the park whenever we did our demonstration. It's quite big. That's the one that would have the spotlight and everything on it and it has the 560x zoom on it. The one to the right is a little bit smaller. They're both Autel drones. This one is a DJI drone that I just showed you.
So for the 90, would we be able to get one of each? Not all three, but one that is higher up and then.
For the 90, it's all of that.
So if I could, right there?
It's all of them.
No, you want to need.
So that's something, you know, this is our, we're trying to get into this to where you're starting a drone program. This is one of the cheapest options we could find to get into a drone program. But if we wanted to, we could taper it off and we need to only get a couple of the drones. I think the tether we kind of need to have because for our park events, we need to be able to get a drone up and keep it up. With the drone, it can stay up all day. You hook it up to a power source and it just stays up.
Is there any risk going with the cheapest option?
I don't say cheap is probably not the best.
I know, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Cost effective.
For jumping into it and all the research that Jay did, we went to conference and we've had four, three other vendors plus that one here giving us demonstrations. The cost difference and the, the options, they changed drastically, yes. But these are still, for the size of city and what we, we have determined, this is a great option for us to get in at entry level. Will we come back next year? More likely, probably, and want to enhance that program. And unfortunately, it's a lot more expensive once you get into the automated flying ones. Next price tag up, we had, if you see this drone option one, we had the option two, option three. And each one, the highest one went up to about $265,000 with this option included. So it's a good entry level, get our folks trained up, get an understanding of it, be able to keep track of the statistics and the data, how much we deploy them or use them actually and for what scenarios. And then bring that data back and if we want to upgrade our program, present it again.
And the more expensive ones are like Lisa's. So you're getting the package. They have units that will sit up on the roof and they launch from that unit. And dispatch can just hit a button and launch a drone to where a call is. And they'll use AI to fly to that call and hover over it. And then when the battery's getting low, we'll return and recharge itself.
So I'm assuming that each one of these particulars have different range, ranges?
These will cover the whole city. So which one or?
I hate to interrupt, but we are, we have a meeting that starts at 7 o'clock and police department can go on and on and on. And I don't even know if this is their last presentation. Is it just, so we are going to have to pick up in late work session and do this again. So why don't you hold tight on that? Don't finish yours up because we're, we'll let you come back and finish any questions for the, for the drones. I have a quick question though, because I think fire department has someone here. And how long will that?
Can I present just the Motorola apartment?
That would be fabulous, you know, that way the.
He can answer any technical questions, sir.
And he doesn't have to, yeah.
Thank you for that word.
Absolutely. You don't have to stick around the late work session. But we do have to, yeah. Sorry, guys. We're going to let fire take over from police now.
That was really fast.
Thank you, coach.
So good evening, Mayor, Council. So one of the items for supplemental consideration is radio replacement. This is something that systemically, eventually, we're going to need to look at throughout the city for public safety. Our current portables are beyond end of life. And so what we have is what we have and you may or may not be able to get those fixed as they break. So what we looked at was breaking this up into a multi-year project because just for fire department, portables and mobiles is about $420,000. So we identified 266,000 that we could use with a tax note and that would cover almost all of our portable radios. And that's my biggest concern right now, is the portable radios. So that, that's the hardware. The tax note can only cover the hardware piece. The software piece is 49,000, but annually it's just 9,000. That's, that's really the main gist of it. With the new portable radios, it's got an LTE feature. So in our fire station today, I was listening to a call that our post went out on and I get out of service. We have the metal roof and you have different areas within the city. Larger buildings where they'll put in, is it BDA or PDA?
BDA.
BDA.
Yes, sir.
As an amplifier in some of your larger buildings. With it picking up on the Wi-Fi and the cellular network, it just enhances that and gets better coverage. But essentially, what we're asking for is the ability within next year's budget to cover those software pieces for it.
And we do have an expert.
Yes.
If anybody has any questions, the Motorola side.
Yeah, absolutely. Fire away. I'm be more than happy to answer any questions you guys have on.
But the radios that we have now, like you said, they're end of life, but they are, they won't work with the new radios.
No, so they'll, they'll still work up. My name's Jonathan, I'm with Motorola. I'm the account representative for the city of Highland Village. So the old radios will still work with the radio system, but the newer radios will also work with the radio system. The biggest push for swapping out the radios for today is because the radios that you guys currently have in service are the Apex 7000 XEs, which are a fire rated radio. However, how long have they been in service up to that point? And they were deemed end of life in 2018 with an end of support date in 2023. So like Chief Green was saying, that if they do break, then Motorola will do a best effort to replace them or fix them the best they can. But there's not a guarantee that they're going to have the parts available to be able to fix them in that stance. So moving over into this new style radio, like Chief Green also specified, it does have an LTE component. A few different smart features is what we call them that give the firefighters or officers the ability to be able to switch over to an LTE backup should they go out of the reaches of the radio system. You guys have great coverage in Denton County. So where we probably see those instances is buildings such as schools, hospitals, things like that, where coverage is diminished. That radio will automatically move over to an LTE component, either using the cell service or the Wi-Fi and be able to automatically communicate. Dispatch won't see a difference, the officers won't see a difference. And so it just enhances the, the range of the communication.
Will the radios automatically switch to whatever Wi-Fi they meet?
No, sir. So the radios will only connect to any Wi-Fi resources that is on, that is programmed into the programming. So it could be an example, can't just go down to Starbucks and pick up Wi-Fi off the Starbucks. It's got to be programmed into the programming of the radio. And obviously, that Wi-Fi resource has to be broadcasted at that area as well. So the city of Highland Village had one. You know, it could be a hidden network to where none of our phones or devices could pick it up. It could only be specific to a public safety network. And that goes for all public safety entities throughout Denton County.
One also advantage of this is up until about COVID, we actively as a department sent personnel to miss deployments. And so that's something that we're training up to be able to do and have to work across the state as well. Another advantage is, you know, Chief Gossel and I go to a conference in Waco, the Texas Fire Chief Conference. You can tune in from there, listen to a structural fire call or anything like that. So using that ability.
Does anybody else have any questions on this one?
The other main point I want to say too is our current radios, I plan on keeping those and using those, we can use them for special events or after a severe storm or something like that, that we can issue to public works and parks. Anybody that needs them, we can reprogram those channels specific for their needs.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? All right. You're welcome. Okay, gentlemen. We are going to have to pick it back up in a late work session. Is there any items on the agenda that you want clarification on?
Item, hold on, items. Item 16 is about the obligation to do a bond and whatnot. Is it, are those costs set in stone and how does that affect any decisions we make on this awesome Highland Shores project?
Sure. So of course, we have matching funds from Denton County. So we would issue bonds for our portion of that. With regard to Highland Shores, we do need to get some direction to finalize what we're going to do there. But really, none of those are going to have a huge impact on, on the cost estimate that we have right now for that.
Okay, I just, I mean, we can make design changes and all.
Yeah.
That could, could lower some of it.
Yeah.
From what I understand, could actually lower the construction and maintenance costs.
We're not.
Okay, I just don't want to be locked in and voting for something if we have to wait to discuss something that we're going to take.
No, great question. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Okay, then we are adjourned at 7:04. Then we are adjourned at 7:04.
Eight, it is seven, oh, I don't know, about 7:13 PM. And we are going to get started with, um, well, first let me say all council members are present with the exception of Councilman Feaster. And we are going to get started with a prayer led by Councilmember Rhonda Hurst, and then she's going to lead us in the pledges.
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Dear Lord, let us pray our brothers and sisters across central Texas affected by the devastating flooding. May those lost to the raging waters rest in peace through the mercy of God, and may their families know God's presence during the time of sorrow and uncertainty. We pray for the first responders and volunteers who are helping with recovery efforts involving the watchful intercession of the Blessed Virgin Mary, under her title, Our Lady of Prompsacor, patroness of people seeking protection during natural disasters and strong storms. We pray God will bring calm to the rushing rivers and protect those working to recover the loss. Amen. The Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag and pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. So next, we have mayor and council reports on items of community interest pursuant to the Texas Government Code. Council, does anybody have any, Rhonda, your light?
Oh, well, my leg's in the, hold on.
I'm sorry.
There.
You're good.
Okay.
Oh, great.
Um, going back to the Kerr County incident, uh, the Highland Village Dental Depot is collecting supplies. Uh, they will be delivering it to the Roanoke Fire Department, which is a authorized, uh, rescue to send it down to central Texas. They're looking for chainsaws, fuel, cleaning supplies, bug spray, itch relief shovels, brooms, blankets, toothpaste, toothbrushes, canned goods, Gatorade, bleach, and the sort. So go to the Dental Depot website, um, they're in Highland Village. I know a lot of people go there, kids love the trains, but they actually, all five locations are taking donations and they will deliver them to Roanoke for you.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm echoing. Turn me down, please. I can hear myself. Okay, council, does anybody else have anything? All right, well, I do. So I am going to have a proclamation. I'm going to ask chief and who.
Ask all, all officers.
Oh, yay. Where did you?
This came from last meeting, but I'm not sure if anybody ever made an explanation for that.
All of these, all these people are here for y'all. They all came out, they all came out for y'all. Y'all can be seated. I'm going to, chief, I guess I'm going to hand you that, the official, and here, I don't want to block anybody. So I have a proclamation to read, um, tonight, and it's to, to our police department. Whereas the city of Highland Village, Texas, when it was incorporated in 1963 and has continually strived to provide a safe and secure environment for its residents and visitors. Whereas on July the 8th, 1975, the city council of Highland Village officially created the Highland Village Police Department in response to the growing need for a dedicated law enforcement agency to serve and protect the community. And whereas the establishment of the police department marked pivotal moment in the city's development, ensuring that professional and accountable public safety services would be available to the citizens of Highland Village. And whereas Highland Village Police Department has since in its inception upheld a proud tradition of service integrity excellence, evolving to meet the changing needs of the community while embracing innovation and community policing. Whereas the department has been led by a succession of committed law enforcement professionals, sworn officers, and civilian staff who have contributed to the safety and well-being of the city through decades of dedicated service. Now therefore I, Charlotte Wilcox, mayor of the city of Highland Village, hereby recognize, honor, and celebrate the founding of the Highland Village Police Department and celebrate 50 years of unwavering service to the community. Thank y'all. All of you. I just want to say before you get, before I turn it over to you, I just want to say, I think we have the best police department in the state of Texas and the United States. All right. And we appreciate each and every one of you. We don't get to tell you that enough. Um, and I know our residents don't get to tell you that enough, but we do. We appreciate each and every one of you. So chief, it's all yours.
I think we have over half the department here right now, which is amazing, since we work, uh, 24/7, 365 days a year to get this many people one place is amazing. We have auxiliaries here. I don't see any dispatchers here tonight, but we are comprised of auxiliary civilian community members, of our sworn officers, of dispatchers, and our one animal control officer, Wes Fittis. So 50 years ago today exactly, we were created by the people of this community. So sort of unique, unique, we've, council, in front of you are new patches.
I know. You gave us a badge too. I'm so excited.
Don't show that as a badge. We're going to show a video of it, and I'm just sort of, sort of highlighting why you're going to see the video of different, um, cars, the technology changes, the patches, the badges. Um, most chiefs change patches and badges when they come in. I waited 10 years to do it, but it's a great opportunity to do it. So the, the new badge is, if you look at the symbol on that coin, um, the new badge will be representative of city hall. It'll, it'll be emblazoned with the picture or, or that 3D image on the badges of city hall, which means we, you know, in theory, in everything we do, we do it for the city. We represent the city in our community. So when you thank them, we thank you. So, that being said, video?[1383.83] So, that being said, video?
(laughing)
Yeah.[185.84]
Obligation to fund the city's portion. You remember Denton County has identified those projects as part of their program as well, their bond program. So I am coming to you requesting authorization to publish a notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation. This is required to be published once a week for two consecutive weeks, 46 days before the issuance or the authorization to issue. So this action is just putting it in the paper. It's not obligating the city to issue the obligations, certificates of obligations. And I had invited Amber Chien from Hillside Securities. They are our financial advisors to discuss our finance plan.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff and Citizens. My name is Amber Chien. I'm with Hilltop Securities. This is my first time at the city council, but maybe you will remember Jim Sabonis, who is this, who has been the city's financial advisor for a long time. And unfortunately, he has some conflict and cannot make it here tonight, and that's why I'm here. I will start with a comment that believe this certificate of obligation is to fund two projects. One is the Highland Shore Boulevard, and the other one is the Highland Village Road. It's the two projects, road-related projects that will be funded or is to be funded through the issuance of the certificates. If we can go to next page, we're going to present a summary of the financing instrument, certificates of obligation, Series 2025. The city has issued similar debt instrument, or I would say the same debt instrument, certificates of obligation previously. The repayment source is going to be the ad valorem taxes of the city. The issuance of the certificates will be tax exempt, meaning it will be at a lower rate compared to, say, U.S. Treasury rate. Currently, the city is rated AAA, which is the highest rating by S&amp;P Global, and we make the assumption that for the Series 2025 certificates of obligation, the city will continue to have AAA rating. That's what we use as an assumption when we prepare the scenario here. And in fact, the city was upgraded in 2018 to AAA and has stayed AAA since, so this is the seventh year, and that's why we make such assumption. The proposed pricing will be September 9th, Tuesday, and that's when we plan to bring the final pricing results and present in front of the council and the citizens. And with the bond closing, meaning delivery of the fund, the funds, September 25th. If we can go to the next page. This will be a little more numbers here, bear with me. Really, if you look at the 1, 2, 3, 4, the fourth line where it says project fund, $7,075,000. That's the, that is the estimated cost to fund the two projects we talked about earlier, Highland Shore Boulevard and Highland Village Road constructions. So that's, that's $7,075,000. And you can see that we have some budgeted costs and related to the issuance here. Amortization of the certificate of obligation, you know, amortization might sound a little, like, what are you talking about? What I mean is the term of this borrowing is 20 years. And we pull the market rate and build in a little bit cushion. Estimated rate is about, you know, right under 5% for the interest cost. You can see that for 20 years of this, for the life of this proposed certificates of obligation, total principal plus interest is about 12.8 million, with an average annual payment on principal plus interest is about 640,000. Currently, the city's tax rate is at 7.55 cents for the debt part, for the INS debt portion, and we expect to see about .3, 0.3 cents of tax rate increase in the first three years. And the next slide will show you the, in fact, the details. I know, more numbers. I'm so sorry. Let me just take you to the very right-hand side, and you can see where I got to, the 000.32. That's, you know, we just, you know, thank you for the feedback. Next time, maybe I won't, I'll skip this slide. But really, in the middle is where we show the projected interest plus principal payment over the next 20 years. You can see that it ends 2045, that's the 20th year. If we can go to the next slide, please. I think no more numbers, just dates and some words here. The proposed schedule of events today, July 8th, is where, is when I'm presenting in front of council and the citizens about this plan of finance to fund the two projects. Again, project cost is a little over $7 million. And in order to proceed with the issuance, we need, we're looking for council's consideration and approval of a resolution to publish the notice of intent that the city would like to issue or certificates of obligation. And like Heather mentioned earlier, once we publish this notice of intent, that it's not obligate the city to issue, say, two days later or two weeks later, if everybody decides to pause or to reconsider, then we can, we can do so. It doesn't mean that once the notice is out there, the city must issue. That's, that is not the case. And if, however, if we do proceed with the proposed schedule, again, I will be back, or Jim Sabonis might be back, is either, our team member will be here, present the final pricing results for the two projects that we mentioned earlier, and we'll, again, there will be a lot of numbers on the screen. We'll show you what happened to the interest rate, we'll show you what happened to the principal plus interest cost. And then, again, closing or delivery of the, of the money will be September 25th, 2025. Next slide will be questions and discussion if there.
Councilors, anybody have any questions? Yes, Rhonda?
Yes.
So if we approve the authorization of this debt today or to advertise it, we are not locked into a price, we're not locked into anything, because if the council chooses to make any changes to Highland Shores, that is still available to the council, correct?
That is correct. However, because today, the, in the agenda packet, you can also see the resolution that we're seeking for approval. It has a not to exceed dollar amount, which is 7.4 million, slightly higher than what I presented earlier, because we wanted to have a little cushion, just in case the market moves up and down. Or if the bid comes in and then, oh, it's actually a little higher, you know, the cost here a little, so we have a little cushion built in. However, if we are looking to upsize the whole project to 10 million, then no, we have to, I have to come here again, do all the slides with bigger numbers.
Yeah, I think it's more of a downsize, but I just, I wanted to make it very clear, because I know there's been a lot of stuff said on the interwebs, that it's all done, it's been bid, but we are at a point where it's still flexible.
Sure, yes. If, yes, if before we price.
Just posting it.
Yeah, I just want to make it very clear, we can post it, but we're not tied to a final number.
Correct.
We just have a not to exceed. We just know, here's your bucket of money, but you only get this much of the bucket.
Correct. And we are not going to actually lock in anything until September 9th.
Perfect. That's, I just wanted clarity on that, because I've been asked.
Yeah, so before September 9th, we can downsize.
Okay.
After we price, we can't.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, does anybody else have any questions? Okay, well, entertain a motion. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I gotta get up here. I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2025-3197 pertaining to the issuance of notification for the certificates of obligation.
Okay, counsel, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh.
It didn't matter.
Councilman Cox. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Carry six oh. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Okay, so now we're going to move to 17. And thank you all so much for staying. Most of the time, when something big happens, like the police department, they all get up and leave right after, but I'm so thrilled you're here. We are going to get a presentation and discuss Highland Shores Boulevard reconstruction project design. I want to make a statement before we get the presentation. Scott's going to come up and do the presentation, but I would just like to just say something, and I wrote it out, so it would go fast. First of all, I want to thank all of you for being here tonight. I have asked the roundabout discussion to be placed back on this agenda this evening for my benefit, and more importantly, for the benefit of our residents. I was not part of the initial conversation on the topic of roundabouts, and since then, I've heard many residents were unaware of this being considered and didn't have an opportunity to provide input. Tonight, I want to hear from staff, specifically why a roundabout is being recommended, particularly at the Hillside location. Also want to hear from our fire chief and our police chief on this matter, and gain their insight regarding safety and emergency responses. In addition, I believe it's important that we understand the full picture, including the cost of the project, as well as ongoing maintenance costs, and as such as landscaping. We will be respectful of the presenter. Yes. And the information shared. I truly appreciate our community members for attending and offering their feedback, whether positive or negative. Your input matters, and it helps guide us in making informed, thoughtful decisions for Highland Village. For years, I have always framed my decisions on how will this benefit our residents and businesses. Tonight, I hope and pray the decision becomes crystal clear. Please know that this evening is not intended to be a roundtable discussion, but rather an opportunity for all of us to listen and learn. As members of the community, you will have the chance to express your concerns and support, and as elected officials, we are here to listen, truly listen, and take your input to heart. We will also be hearing staff during a formal presentation, and I kindly ask that you allow them to do the presentation without interruption, so that everyone has a clear and complete understanding of the information being shared. I want to assure you that council and staff are committed to doing what is best for Highland Village. Every decision we make is guided by one central question, how does this benefit our residents? This is, this matter is no exception. Thank you again for being here. And Mr. Kristin, you can do your.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. City Secretary is handing out a couple of handouts from the Highway Administration. I also placed some on the entry table.
Can you pull the mic closer? Pull the mic closer.
You hear me now?
There you go.
I'm in the phone commercial. Oh, okay, they got the presentation up. City Secretary's handing out a couple of flyers from the, from the Federal Highway Administration, which I also placed several on the entry table regarding roundabouts, but I'll jump right into it. Hey, Lori? Lori, do I have a new one of these?
Scott, before you get started, can, is the sun bothering you guys on this side? Do we need to lower those shades? Can somebody grab those and pull those down?
Yeah, I think we just pull down.
Oh, don't fall through the window. There you go. Okay. Rhonda, Rhonda, turn on the light.
Oh, I'm on my lights one? It's because my leg hits it.
No, you never turn it off.
Oh, I never turned it on.
You did. You turned it on, but didn't.
Can I ask questions too?
It's all. I just didn't know if you wanted to say something.
Oh, no, I just have questions to ask.
All right, are we ready? Okay. Everybody, everybody ready? Okay.
Ready?
We're ready.
Some history on the project. Pre-2014, the city was in discussion to implement either a second fire station somewhere in the city or some way to improve emergency personnel's response time to the western side of the city. The city adopted NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, 1710, as a standard for fire personnel mandates and their response times. Saying that, in 2014, the city commissioned Kim Lee Horn and Associates to perform a traffic study of the Highland Shores Boulevard corridor. In that study, it was traffic signs, warrant studies, traffic signals, warrant studies, both pedestrian and mobility, car traffic. That information was presented to council in late 2014. In 2021, the city had a bond issue. In that bond issue, the Public Works CIP identified Highland Shores Boulevard as in need of replacement. So, excuse me, at that same time, Denton County was putting together a voter-approved bond package, of which the city included two projects into that. One's Highland Shores Boulevard, and one is Highland Village Road. The voter-approved bond issue for Denton County was approved. So the city moved forward with some more studying. In 2022, the city commissioned SBI Engineering to do a mobility study for the Highland Shores corridor. In that study, we identified Highland Shores Boulevard into three sections. Section one, the blue section, is Highland Village Road to almost to Briar Hill Boulevard. Section two is the purple section, Briar Hill Boulevard to Twin Coves. Section three, one, sorry, I got that backwards. Section one's a green section, section three is the blue section. Section one would be from Twin Coves to Foreigner Market 2499. Later that year, city staff presented mobility studies to council. We gave three options. There was a, I like to call it the platinum option, the gold option, and the as-is option. The platinum option had all kinds of bells and whistles, golf cart pass, sidewalks, bike lanes, totally redoing, pavement cross-section, adding sidewalks, fixing some ADA deficiencies and so on and so forth. Council provided direction at that time to look at section two with option B, with modifications. So option B was the gold package. It's basically everything I just said, without a golf cart path being within the center median. They also added, I don't want to do that. They also added some additional items that we'll discuss here in another slide. Moving forward in time, in 2024, you always want to do your, your subterranean project prior to doing the street surface projects. So we had a sanitary project that we bid and awarded and have constructed. And a few council meetings ago, we awarded design for a drainage project that was derived from geotechnical study that we did in the Highland Shores Boulevard corridor. In layman's terms, we found subterranean groundwater that needs to be addressed. So we are designing a project to address that. The area that is going to be addressed is in the, between Twin Coves and Hillside. I believe it's Green Oak is the street in between area. Currently, with our design of section two, option B, we are roughly 65, 70% in our design phase. Keeping with the history, I wanted to show the original mobility plan for Highland Shores Boulevard that was presented that we discussed. This is not what was approved, this is the original plan that we discussed in '22. We had a total of five roundabouts proposed. You say, oh my God, five roundabouts. Remember, this was not a project to enhance safety at intersections. It was a project to, that was derived from emergency response times, to get the emergency personnel to the western side of the city. So Highland Village Road to Rainey was a proposed roundabout. Going down through Community Center, it basically stayed the same. Briar Hill, we had a roundabout proposed. We found that the difficult design entity at that location, so we took that out, staff took that out. Timbercrest Lane, we had a roundabout proposed. Hillside, we have a roundabout proposed, and Twin Coves, we had a roundabout proposed. That being said, there was a long discussion, council presentation regarding this. The direction we received was repair pavement, edge drop-offs, add a roundabout at Hillside, vehicle lane narrowing for a perceived speeding issue, bike lane widening for mobility, adding a dedicated turn lane onto the eastbound Highland Shores to northbound Lakeside. Right now, there's no turn lane there, and it's the location that everybody goes up to the, the median break and does a U-turn to get over to Lakeside. So we will add a median cut and a dedicated left turn lane to Lakeside. And in addition to the project was a dedicated turn lane on Briar Hill Boulevard into the DKH Academy. Those design criteria were received, and our design moved forward. So I wanted to, these are the, these are the Federal Highway Administration handouts that city secretary gave you, as well as there's some on the front table. I don't think I have enough for everybody, but there was some up there. Just going through these, Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, you know, quickly, they state an average roundabout reduces severe crashes, those resulting in injury or loss of life. They reduce them by 78 to 82%. Statistics show that roundabouts are safe for both pedestrians and traffic. Some exhibits of what they could look like are here. Your crosswalks are set back, you do not dump your pedestrians into the actual roundabout, you put them on a trail or a sidewalk. If you put them on a trail, they can, it's recommended, they can remain on their bikes. If you put them on a sidewalk, it is recommended for bicyclists to become a pedestrian and walk their bikes. This is an exhibit showing right-angle collisions in a, in a typical four-way intersection. If a, as a pedestrian crosses, there are a potential of 32 right-angle collision potentials, which are eliminated to eight in a roundabout. This is a exhibit for, it's basically instructions on how a pedestrian would negotiate a roundabout, either in a bike or walking. So some feature, more features of the section two. Our design will reduce the amount of intersected crosswalks. There's a lot of crosswalks and intersections that have no sidewalks leading up to them, or a sidewalk on one side and a crossing to nowhere. You have to design your infrastructure to meet ADA requirements, that's American Disability Act. So if there's, if there's not a, a way to make it across the street safely, then you don't put it there. Improvements to visibility, there are a lot of vertical curves. Vertical curves being the hills, the topography of Highland Shores Boulevard, as well as landscape visibility issues along Highland Shores Boulevard. We are addressing a lot of those. We're correcting sidewalk tripping hazards that are existing. Remember, Highland Shores Boulevard and the, and the infrastructure and trail system, sidewalk system was constructed with several developments. Highland Shores, although it is one sub, one entity, is actually 17-plus subdivisions, so they were built at different times throughout the, throughout the year, or throughout the We designed a typical pavement section based upon the geotechnical report. There's been a recommendation for that. We are remediating erosion areas adjacent to the roadway. Some areas have undermining of the pavement, some areas have ground settlement away from the paving. All that'll be addressed. There's a lot of subgrade failure, causing pavement failure during an acceptable construction method for roadwork on a residential street is, you could take native ground, compact it to 95%, and put a thicker pavement on it, and it's acceptable. However, a lot of Highland Shores Boulevard was built in late 80s, early 90s, and it is, it's showing fatigue due to irrigation, irrigation leaks, groundwater, and poor construction. TechDOT, Tech Department of Transportation inspects two of the culverts, which they consider bridges, on Highland Shores Boulevard, on a, on a biannual basis. We do have recommended repairs from them that are addressed in our, in our design. Those two bridges would be just, I don't know, 100 feet west of Briar Hill intersection and in between Timbercrest and Hillside, the creek crossing there. Improving the drainage system of the existing underground network, that's the project that we just approved for design. So we get into, this is the. So we get into, this is the same exhibits that I showed last month when we were here. So I did not get a chance to take out your recommended, Councilwoman Hurst's recommended crosswalk, pedestrian crosswalk at the Briar Hill intersection, if you remember. She asked if we would take that out. Briar Hill would, is proposed to be a three-way stop with a flyby. The westbound Highland Shores Lane would not stop. It would be striped in a barricade, a vertical hardscape barricade, which is the blue line in the center of the, in the center of the intersection would be where the traffic, non-stopping traffic would fly through at the posted speed, of course, or recommended lower speed that we could, we could place there. Once it gets on the westbound, or the west side of the intersection, it would merge back into one lane. Briar Hill folks that are northbound, you have a choice to go right or left. Right-hand folks, right turn movements would be into basically the existing asphalt striping pattern that's there now. However, we will go through that intersection with new paving, new concrete paving, so to be more permanent. Westbound left turn cars would, we have the striping plan in here, too. They would follow the radius onto a westbound lane and merge with the flyby traffic, about a hundred and fifty feet or so to the west. The median would be extended in both directions. You still have a eastbound lane that would stop due to the intersection. You have a right turn lane that would turn onto Briar Hill Boulevard and a dedicated right turn lane, a couple hundred feet south on Briar Hill Boulevard to enter the DKH Academy site. You also have the green bike lane along Highland Shores Boulevard. Couple other features you'll see in this is we have an existing sidewalk already on the south side. It will be reconstructed. But we are adding a sidewalk on the north side, as well as expanding the bike lane to a minimum of seven foot going westbound. So what we have in the existing asphalt section would basically be continued on Highland Shores in the, in the proposed concrete section. Moving to the west, you see, we do have, as directed by council, a roundabout proposed at the Hillside intersection. The bike lane before, as you approach the roundabout, the bike lane does do a transition onto, I can't call it a sidewalk anymore because we're gonna, we're gonna widen the sidewalk from a five-foot sidewalk to a ten-foot sidewalk, which deems it a trail. So you'll have a ten-foot trail section that pedestrians can use to navigate through the roundabout at the crossing sections. Once you get to the west side through the intersection, you can see the green line picks back up, sidewalk transitions back to five foot, and the bike lane is located back on the street section. You'll notice that Hillside, where Pool Number Two is located, the entrance to Pool Number Two is located. We have extended and proposed a median, which you will not be able to make a left turn out of. Therefore, we left the other entrance on the northwest side of the Pool Two parking lot in place with a median cut, so you can enter and exit there as well. You can see our dedicated left turn lane on Lakeside with the median cut. At that location, there is an existing crosswalk. Councilwoman Hurst asked us to add an enhanced lighting system, much like the lighting system at Community Center and the three lighting system, enhanced lighting systems we have on Highland Village Road at that location. If you'll notice, we also, where there is no sidewalk on the north side, now with the new design, there will be a dedicated sidewalk on the north side of the cross section.
How wide will that sidewalk be?
It'll be a five-foot wide sidewalk.
Roundabout, approximately how far west is that first crosswalk?
The crosswalk on the west side is, it's, it's about a hundred feet or so, a little, little over. You can't design, you don't design crosswalks to be within the roundabout. You have to get out of them.
And on the north and south side, how far setback are those sidewalks, or I'm sorry, the crosswalks?
On the south side, it looks like it's about fifty feet, just eyeballing it. The north side, maybe seventy-five feet. Moving further west, which is the western project limit, Twin Coves, we would redo that intersection, put the new striping pattern in, and stop the project there. However, I did, I did include in my last presentation that if we could, if we could achieve economy of scale with the striping plan, we would propose adding removal of the striping plan from this point west to twenty-four ninety-nine, and placing the new striping plan down with the narrower lanes and the wider bike path. We would not add the sidewalk on the north side of Highland Shores at this time. The opinion probable construction cost is ten point one million. Again, we have budgeted, approved, and funded the engineering, and the Denton County bond is up to a fifty percent Maybe I can head off one of the questions now. I heard some concerns about costs. Cost of roundabout at Hillside, it would be roughly four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That takes into consideration some drainage work that would need to be done, some franchise utility relocations that would need to be done in that area. But it's, it's miniscule compared to what, you know, you would still have to put, if you didn't build a roundabout, you would still have to put the intersection in. And the intersection itself is, would cost three fifty, three twenty-five. So it's, you know, it's one percent.
And the cost of Briar Hill? The cost of the flyby, is that what you called it?
Flyby at Briar Hill is just a standard, there's no additional cost for that.
What about long-term maintenance for a roundabout versus a traditional?
With the, with the concrete infrastructure, you know, you design to a fifty-year lifecycle. Would there be some pavement marking maintenance? Yes, but that's cheap.
And the circle part?
It's concrete paving and fifty-year lifecycle.
Notice there was not a crosswalk east of Hillside, only the one on the west side. Now today, they cross at the stop signs. Let me go back. So we've got the one up here on the west.
Yep.
Reason there's not one on the east?
On the east side, you have combined the bicycle traffic and the pedestrian traffic, pedestrian traffic being the walking pedestrians, and it's not advisable to, to put those together in a situation. We're getting, on the west side, we're, we're kind of stretching it a little bit, with the north side being the transition where the bikes still go into the road. However, on the, on the, we gotta cross them, we gotta cross them somewhere, and that's the least evasive side that we can see.
But you are adding sidewalk to get to the other crossing?
Mm-hmm. There's a, you talk about Lakeside?
On the west side and on the north side?
Yes, sir.
Sidewalk around that corner?
Yes, there's a sidewalk being added all along the entire north side of the corridor on this project that is not currently there. So there will be a sidewalk from Hillside Drive all the way to Twin Coves.
And just for clarification, and all the questions will come up, that median will go all the way through there, so anyone crossing the street will cross one lane of traffic to a median?
You will have a safe zone in the median.
Okay, okay. On all three of these crossings?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
On the hillside, Scott, on going, I guess, north, you're not going to be able to turn into the pool because there's a, you've got a median there. Is that correct?
If you're gonna exit the parking lot?
No, if you're gonna go in.
Hey, you can go in. You can make a right, right-hand turn in, into the parking lot.
She's saying if you come north on Hillside?
If you're going.
Before you get to Briar, to.
Yeah, you'll have to, you either go around, you either go around.
You go around the circle and come in.
The circle to go in, the other median cut, or you go around to Green Oaks and, and come up eastbound Highland Shores Boulevard to the entry.
Okay. But you can't go, you've got a median there, so you can't.
No, I am.
Okay.
You have, you have to protect so far away from a roundabout.
Rhonda, do you have a question?
I have some questions, but I turned my light on, so whenever it's my turn, let me know.
Good, good. I appreciate that. Go ahead. I guess, well, I don't know whether I should, we should let the, let's go ahead and ask our questions.
Okay. During this whole time, a roundabout's a new thing. Were there any community meetings with the community specifically?
Every meeting that we had with City Council is open session. There's been no community meetings. I did meet once with the Highland Shores Board, HOA, if you want to count that.
Okay. I will add further down that we probably need to work on our community outreach because I don't think everybody so busy takes into account looking at agendas. My next question is, so the number one driving force is we were in deficiency with the IFC code. How many seconds is saved with this roundabout? Does it put us in compliance?
I might defer those, that question to the emergency folks, any of the chiefs.
Yeah, I think we, we do want to hear from, from the chiefs.
All right, well, yeah, that's, I mean, I have a list, but, I mean, if that's the number one driving force, what are we saving in time and how for this? Oh, look.
So what we're referring to is NFPA seventeen-ten, and what it refers to is the first-due engine on a structural fire being there within four minutes, ninety percent of the time. So would it get in compliance? No.
Okay, so how many seconds are we saving then? So we're out of compliance, I'm just gonna make a number, say by ten minutes. Are we out of compliance by nine minutes and thirty seconds? Like, what is, what is, what's the time we're talking about? I know time is of the essence. I just want to know what, what, what this is saving.
With the roundabout, current policy states that you're going to come to a complete stop, and so you would save a little bit there. I don't know the data on how quickly it clears out at an intersection versus you've got a four-way gridlock roughly. I haven't been here long enough to know how busy Highland Shores Road is to where if you get that, where I was at before in Dallas County, that was a bigger problem. And then the fly-through, obviously, that, that part does save some time when you're not coming to a complete stop or clearing out an intersection with a fifty-five thousand pound apparatus.
So to be clear, you have to stop regardless at the roundabout, per process, procedure or policy?
For, for stop signs, yes.
For stop signs, not for a roundabout?
Not for a roundabout.
For a roundabout, okay, well, you said you have to, so you don't come to a stop?
Correct, not for a roundabout.
Okay, you just slowed down.
We've never had to place that.
And we don't know the time savings with all that?
No.
Okay. Because that's the big question is, is this two seconds? Is it fifty seconds? Is it a hundred seconds? And with the flyby, that's why I asked the cross-section, crosswalk to be taken out, because you should not put a crosswalk where graphics isn't stopping. I mean, that's, okay. And then my next, thank you so much for the Federal Highway handout from twenty-ten. Since then, there have been, the United States has not had a lot of studies on pedestrian traffic, but the Federal Highway Administration has since then referenced an ASC publication and a pedestrian study done in October of twenty-twenty-three that studied four hundred and fifty roundabouts. And the conclusions were that roundabouts reduce fatal and serious injury crashes for non-motorized users, which are bikes and people and pedestrians. However, they exhibit higher minor incident rates. Also, in the study done by the DOT in October twenty-twenty-three, it says in the term of total crashes, roundabouts have a higher overall crash rates than through and always stop-controlled intersections. So there's a lot of, pedestrians are still new being studied in America. They're, they've been studied all over in Europe. In the past two weeks, I've consulted with different city engineers, traffic engineers about roundabouts and all. So from a safety perspective, it's actually not as clear. But one of the guiding documents through the highway recently is where there's high pedestrian traffic, like to a community center or school, your risks go up with children because they aren't always following, they, they just cut through. And so when that, when you put a roundabout, of all the places to put a roundabout, they say that is one of the least favorite places to put, and it looks like this might be an issue. I just, I keep getting, so I went as nerdy because I do this for, in civil engineering, and there's just, it's very gray, and the, the studies are showing that, yes, it reduces fatal and serious, which I don't know if we've had any of that at Hillside and Highland Shores. Have we had fatal? Yeah. And high speed, because it's a slow road. However, putting in a roundabout can increase low speed and pedestrian interactions, just based on the white papers from ASCE, Federal Highway Association, and DOT. And again, that graphic was in twenty-ten. It doesn't even take into account micro-mobility.
Did you want to ask the chief about accidents?
Have we had any high-speed collisions or fatalities at that intersection?
Scooters.
Scooters, right, scooters. My time here, for fatality accidents in the last ten years, I'm not aware of any, no. And again, I just want to, there was a lot of information that you put back there, and I just want you to be fair, are fair when we're presenting this data. As Scott said, it was primarily created to help the first responders get from one end of the city to the other. And around that timeframe, the fire department was really in a quandary with whether or not to build another fire department to meet the NFPA standards for those responses or add additional people or whichever way you want to look at it. Around that timeframe, we implemented the Emergency Care Attendant Program for the Police Department. So we actually fall under those same standards for BLS, which is Basic Life Support, meaning we get graded and rated and evaluated as a city or as first responders how fast we get to a scene. We have very strict policies in place in the Police Department for stopping at intersections, even with lights and sirens. Those intersections slow us down tremendously. So we can't, you know, I don't know what a kind of a computer program or an engineer would be able to figure out, putting one in each, in all of the places that were initially recommended, or in various places, which would be most advantageous. But we're, it's impossible for, we don't have the, we don't have the know-how right now to, to tell you how much it saves because we can't test drive it. know-how right now to, to tell you how much it saves because we can't test drive it. There's no way to do that. There's probably a computer program or somebody who could pay to figure all that out.
That's what I would have thought. We paid the consultants, would have done the study. If we had five roundabouts, this saved this much. If we had this much roundabouts, it saved this much. And so it's, it's, it's an unknown. The whole reason we're doing it, it's almost still an unknown. I would think that the engineers have this, I know they have the software, could have put that in the model. I mean, if this was, and it is, and safety's huge, and police and fire are huge, but what are we talking about? Because what if it increases our safety to our children? And heaven forbid, a micro mobility zips through at the roundabout. I'm, I'm just thinking more of, you're putting it in, in the one location where kids are gathering, and, and it maybe pick another intersection where the kids aren't gathering, because kids are not going to follow the roundabout rules. They're not. They're just going to zip in and out. And that's my concern, is maybe we look at a different place, but this is where they're coming.
And that's what, just I'm going to step back. I answered your questions, but I think that was this whole part of this discussion was to decide or compromise or decide what's best, what's not, educate everybody, and why, why this thing has been in, in the news, so to speak, in front of council for so many years, because it's, it's been an issue to look forward to, you know, maybe not, when you say, Scott said not about safety at the intersection, really, it really, I'm going to refute that, say, yes, it is about safety at the intersection for us getting through safely, efficiently, while, while also paramount to say that anything that I've been part of for this city and anything that I've seen anybody else for the city, we try to address safety as paramount. From golf carts to micro mobility to, to, to this, is really emphasis about the overall safety. And, and, and thank you for your comments. It's, it's an open discussion now.
I 100% agree, but all these decisions were made before a micro mobility ordinance. And like we tell my kids and our nieces and nephews, we don't want any squished lizards because that's what happens when parent, people aren't paying attention in these roundabouts or teenage drivers. And the one place of all the places in Highland Shores is where everyone's gathering. That's, that's where, as a mom and as a civil engineer, that loca, it's the location. You're, you're, you're putting it in the one place everyone's going, oh, let's go to the pool. They're not going to pay, they're just not. They're eight years old, they're 10 years old, their brains aren't all the way formed. And half the time, they're not wearing freaking helmets. So that's, that's where I'm coming from, is from an engineering standpoint, but also a mom, because I don't want any squished lizards. And the minute we have a squished lizard, guess who they're going to come back on?
Okay, so council, does anybody else have any just immediate questions? Because I was going to go ahead and let, and take.
I got one quick.
Go ahead, Sean.
Are there any planned changes to the speed limit on Highland Shores Boulevard based on the reconstruction?
No, it will remain 30 miles an hour.
But the roundabout speed limit is?
The roundabout speed limit will be, it's not regulatory, it's a, it's a black on yellow. It'll be recommended at 15 or 20.
15.
I will say that the lines, the striping, bringing the striping in, I think has done a good job at reducing the speeds on Phase 3. But going to, kind of back to our, our talk on 407, now with 300 and something students heading down from the east side to the west side, I think it's worth a conversation that maybe not a speed limit on that flyby, but a possibility of a school zone, doesn't have to be a big one, but one that extends past where DKH is, because you do have that east side traffic that'll be coming in, you'll have the west side traffic backed up waiting to turn left. So something to consider extending past where it starts on Briar Hill, onto Highland Shores, maybe 500 feet, 400 feet, but something that we, we don't need tech staff's permission on that one, correct?
Right, but you, you still want to design per MUTCD, and standard school zones are 750 feet either way.
That we get.
So there are exceptions to the rule, and you can take, you can, we can look at that. However, DKH is not a, a, a school district school, so it'd be really difficult to, to.
Actually, no.
Try to continue a school zone onto, onto Highland Shores Boulevard. Yes, ma'am?
Do a school, you can do a school zone for a non-public school. I know this because my kids attend schools that have school zones and they're not public schools. So we can do, that is 100% doable.
We can look into it.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So council, y'all want to, any more questions or you can wait? I'm going to go ahead and let the public do visitor comments. I do want to, I'm sorry.
I mean, we're having a discussion. We are not making any decisions this evening, correct?
We are not voting. They need.
There's no vote. However, staff is looking, you know, we're creeping up on the 70% design. We are looking for some direction.
Okay.
If you want us to change directions, we need to know so we can continue designing our road reconstruction.
Okay. All right. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so I first want to let everyone know that, again, we appreciate your input. We did receive, I received a lot of, of emails, and so I'm going to not read each email into the record, but I am going to read the names of the emails that we received. Starting on June 24th, Brent Haig, Wednesday Stuckey, and if I slaughter your name, I am so sorry. I don't know what happened to Smith and Joneses. They just, they're not around anymore, so, but I am terribly sorry. Michael Reed, Catherine Giulio, Pat Albrecht, Ellen Hakla, Jane Segarev, Monica Greider, Gabby Hoffman, Teresa Vu, Deborah Marinello, Stacy Tredway, Pam Parnell, Tammy Ferguson, Jan and Mavis Hayden, Connie Carlson, Joe Berger, Deborah Maloney, Clyde Rainford, Kim Schultz-Rainford, Rod and Melissa Miller, Margaret Luce, Dave Rush, Michelle Spunholes, Chris Grimes, Neil and Sheila Jeffrey, Stephen Allhouse, Gail and Richard Payfield, Natalie Shook, I think it's Shook, actually, Don Leverdy, Nancy and Steve Rodems, Roy Williamson, Richard Huggins, Mike and Kay Willenborg, Rod and Melissa Miller, Alex and Catherine Johnson, the Boosie family, and Paul Wilkson, and Leslie Andrus. And those are all emails in opposition of a roundabout at Hillside. So I want that to be done. Okay. And then, now we are going to do visitor comments. So I will call you up, and you will state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes. And guys, I'm going to be honest with you, I'm not normally a stickler about the three minutes. I really, I feel like if you come out, you, but we have a lot of, of people. So I'm going to ask you to really try, do we have the lights? Angie, we do? So you'll see the lights up on the, on the little speaker thing, and you'll, okay, oh, right there. So when it turns red, you know your three minutes are up. If you go way over, I have a button up here, and the floor beneath you will open. You will slide out and you'll pay respects to our, our memorial outside. So just know that, that if I start reaching under the dais, you know you're fixing to get, you're fixing to go on a ride. So, okay, first, we have Joseph Berger.
Your honor and members of the council, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak this evening. Since the presentation started, I have changed what I have written down considerably. So I'm just going to, there were a couple of really good jokes, and we're going to pass them by. You know what's at that corner. The only thing that has been omitted so far is the fact that there is a first-rate lemonade stand there. And, and we would lose it with a roundabout. I've talked with over 100 neighbors via social media over the last two weeks. Of those people, 20 favored the roundabout. They, they lauded its ability to help traffic move through faster. And for, for sake of ease of identification, we can refer to them as non-voters because none of them live in Highland Village. They don't care. They want to get through. They want to get through from one end to the other end as fast as they can. They're from somewhere else, they want to pass. I don't understand why they want to do it, but they do. The stop signs along the way have, help us a great deal, especially at the intersection where they're planning on putting, we're planning on putting in a roundabout. The second group is vitally concerned about safety. Safety more than anything of our children, whether they're on scooters, whether they're on bikes, whether they're walking, selling lemonade under the trees there, together with adults who run, walk, together with other people or with their dogs. The second group I put in a very different category, and you got it, they're voters. Given more time, I could have added more names, but there were about, about 60. And not all of them are the same as those that, that you received some from. So I'm going to skip all the stuff about New Jersey, other than to say that in 1920, they started building roundabouts about five years ago, they started dismantling them. And you can look at public access, the state has a plan for taking them down. They no longer work. Some of us will argue that they never did, but they never work. Is it worth the construction cost cost to do this? Do we have, have we had accidents that make us want to do this? The answer to both, both of those, I think, is very important. But a couple of things were said earlier. The four-way stop sign in crashes, that street is too compact. Once you stop, you're not going to be able to get fast enough in most cars to, to hit somebody going through and, and, and do any damage, or at least great damage. It's not a typical four-way stop. It's not a typical area. And if you think that you're going to get kids to go down to a crosswalk that's another 50 yards down, or one area that doesn't have a crosswalk, they'll make one. That's their area. The basketball courts, the, the tennis courts, the, the swimming pool all summer, those things are used, and they're used all day long. And, and we need to, to really, really protect our kids. I'm hoping there are no lanes that go by. Flyby? I mean, that's the last thing we need, is to go faster on the Boulevard. That, that scares, that scares me beyond belief. Bike lanes that disappear in the pavements, we tried that already. That's why we put bike lanes out there, because it didn't work and people were getting hurt. But the worst thing that I heard, and I hope I heard it incorrectly, is that this project was not a project to enhance safety. Really? That's what he said? Is that what he meant? It was early on in the first part. The only thing I can say is, this looks like a solution that's looking for a problem. And for that reason, I am dead set against it. Thank you.
I know. Okay, so you got lucky, because obviously the timer didn't work. So, is the timer working? Or working?
Well, I thought it was.
Well, I can make the timer work up here. Hang on. Okay, so next up is going to be Oh, maybe we unplugged it.
Promise I won't.
One second. So just because I think she's.
It wasn't plugged in?
It wasn't plugged in?
No.
Oh, you got lucky. Okay. Now are we good?
There we go. The first part of my whole thing that I had written out was about safety, and I believe that we have covered that. And I know that these moms with kids, I'm a grandmother, and all my grandkids live in Highland Village, or they all go to schools. But I will let the moms address the safety. To me, the thing that was, has been the most upsetting about this is that I found out about it a month ago on Nextdoor, when it has been in the works for years. I've looked through all the village things that we get, all the communications about streets, lights, and I've never seen it listed. Never. Okay, that's just, so that's what a person told me, which really got me upset, but I realized he was wrong. See, people tell you things, and it wasn't true. He told me the cost at designs and bits have already gone out and were accepted. It's too late in the game to make any changes. That opportunity passed months ago. I realize now that is not true. Millions of dollars have already been spent or committed. I have this in writing that he told me this. A bond election will begin September, and construction will begin in late 2025. None of that's true. And, but he's posting it out there and getting idiots like me upset. So here, though, are my questions, which I believe have already been answered. Who specifically, I have a minute. Who specifically approved this particular roundabout placement? I believe it was y'all. I drive down Highland Shores all the time. Why, if we're trying to cut out stop signs, wouldn't the other hillside be the better option where the pool isn't? Or Timbercrest, where there's not a pool? Why, were those two four-way stops ever considered? Those are the four-way stops I think are a little, that would speed up a lot. Okay. I guess y'all didn't consider those two. I just feel like there's been very limited communication. There haven't been any public forums. We really have, this is the first time that the public has been notified about this. Did Highland Shores have to approve it? That we're taking over some of their land, or does that not matter? I only got 20 seconds left. Is it going to be, is it worth the expense of taxpayer dollars to potentially decrease the surrounding property values due to increased traffic complexity and perceived risk in residential area? And my time is up. So I really didn't get any questions answered. I'm going to let y'all do the safety.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, you know, I probably should have read also, and I just assume everybody knows, we can't answer, when you come up and you ask questions, we can't answer because it's not an agenda item, and we can't answer you. So that's the reason that we're sitting up here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's not that we don't want to, I assure you. Maybe we'll do it on social media, because that's where the truth is. Listen, social media is just that. You, I am not going to comment. I don't do city business on social media, because social media is just that, it's social. I will put out stuff that Highland Village is doing great things about, you know, Highland Village and all the activities we have going on. But if it's city business, something like this, I'm not going to comment on it. It, this is where we need to do it. So, but I just wanted y'all to know that we, we can't comment, so please understand. We're making notes, but we can't comment. Monica Greider.
So my name is Monica Greider. I live at 3107 Hillside Drive in Highland Village, and I am in opposition to the roundabout. I would like to see there be no roundabouts added in, most especially at my intersection. I've lived there for eight years. And my first thought was, I don't see any backups going on there. There's not, you don't see five cars at any direction. You normally see one to two cars, maybe three. So I don't see it as a need there. We have not been presented with any data to say how it would save time for emergency response. We've not been given that information. And, you know, kind of in the response, in response to the last speaker that came up, with it being said on social media that, you know, it was already close to being done, I called Mr. Scott Kristin, I think it's his name, that was just here, and was told it's too late, and was actually laughed at for asking if it was too late, to speak my opinion, that yes, it had already been presented in city council. That yes, it had already been presented in city council, and the public had an opportunity to come and speak. And, you know, just like what's already been said here before, we were not informed, because we don't go online and read the minutes. I read every email that comes through, and not until an email about two months ago that said a roundabout was being put in, and it was slipped in with the same sentence as a bike lane, did I have any awareness about the roundabout, where I could have come and spoke my opinion against the roundabout. So I do believe it poses a safety hazard. I'm a cyclist, I cycles through that intersection multiple times a week, and I do believe this poses a safety hazard for me and many other people. And to put our crosswalks away from the intersection, I think, is a bad idea. So, thank you for the time, and thank you, Ms. Hurst, for responding to my email. I appreciate you taking the time to do that.
Thank you. Natalie? Natalie Shook? Where are you? Natalie, is it shook or shock? Shock. Why do I keep calling you shook then? Tell me, Charlotte, it's shock. Shocker.
All right. I had to write this out as well. Don't start my time yet.
Take your name and address for the record, really.
Okay, first, I just want to remind everyone, Highland Shores Boulevard, it is in a neighborhood. I think we need to remember, it is our neighborhood, like people have said. It is where this roundabout is proposed, the pool, the tennis courts, the playground, everything is right across the street. This flyby thing, that's another conversation, I don't have the time for that. Okay, so I wrote an email to each one of you about why we do not want a roundabout in our neighborhood of Highland Shores. There are many reasons why, but tonight I want to speak about my number one priority. Oh, gosh, which is my child, my friends' children, my neighbors' children, and every kid that lives, plays, rides their bike, scooter, walks, plays soccer, basketball, tennis, pickleball on Highland Shores. I come to you expressing my deep concern regarding the proposed installation of a roundabout within our neighborhood streets. While roundabouts may offer benefits in larger traffic systems, I believe they pose significant safety risks, especially to children in residential areas like ours. Roundabouts are designed to keep traffic flowing, which inherently reduces the need for full stops. In a neighborhood where children walk, ride bikes, and play near streets, the absence of clear stop signs can lead to confusion and increase the chances of accidents. Children are unpredictable, as are distracted drivers, and the constant motion of vehicles through a roundabout leaves little margin for error for quick stops. Furthermore, roundabouts required heightened driver awareness and decision-making, something not always present, especially in residential areas where distractions are common and drivers may not expect children to be nearby. The central island and circulating traffic lanes can also obstruct sightlines, making it more difficult to see a child attempting to cross. Traditional intersections with stop signs, like the one that we currently have, create natural pauses, encouraging drivers to slow down and assess their surroundings more thoroughly. This moment of stillness is critical for child safely, safety, and simply doesn't exist in a roundabout. As a concerned resident, parent, and advocate for the safety of our community's children, I respectfully urge you to reconsider any plans to implement roundabouts in our neighborhood. I believe that traffic calming alternatives such as raised crosswalks and increased signage can achieve safer streets without sacrificing child safety. Sincerely, Natalie Shuck, 3035 Woodhollow Drive.
Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you.
Denise Hedges. Denise Hedges?
It's gonna take me.
It's okay. Your time has started. No, I'm just kidding. I'm kidding.
Okay, I will try to think as fast as I can and speak as fast as I can.
You are just fine.
But when you're pushing 80, that's not necessarily.
And I won't push the button on you, I promise, I will not push the button.
Okay, I'm two houses away on Oak Hollow, oh, I'm Denise Hedges, 780 Oak Hollow Lane, 75077. So I'm two houses away from the, the thing. I'm not going to beat dead horses, I think everybody's been so eloquent. I would like to point out, I, I just found out about this, and I don't know why, I just found out about it. But, so communication's an issue for me. I'm concerned about a number of things, and those who've already spoken on the safety, I'm not going to, again, repeat it, but I'm concerned about the values of the houses, I'm concerned about the, that corner, especially with the pool and the tennis courts. I also didn't hear anybody say whether they're going to have to take out the fountain. Granted, it's a visual thing, but I've always loved it. I even love it when the college kids, I know they're, it's illegal, put the soap suds in the fountain. But I've had it come close to my house, those suds. But anyway, but I'm concerned about property values, because it looks like people on corners, which would be two or three that I know of, are going to lose part of their property to make that round thing, because it's not round now, so something's going to happen, right? I'd like to know more about that, but I'm concerned about property values. I expect I won't be here forever, I don't know why I don't expect to be here forever. But at any rate, that's what I have to say. And thank you for your attention to detail and your good questions and presentations. I appreciate everything. And the police too, and the fire department, because my husband kept falling on his head. And I got to know these first responders practically by first name. And I always meant to send them all something, but anyway.
Will you just send it to me and I'll make sure they get out?
Okay. Yeah. Okay, well, thanks on behalf of both of us, actually.
We appreciate you coming. Helen, Helen Solomon?
Hi, I am a U.S. resident and a Canadian citizen still. I moved here just a few years ago. I'm on the corner of Hillside and Oak Hollow Lane. I have a view of that corner, and I see all the children and all of my lovely neighbors walking their beautiful dogs. And I have to say, the people crossing there is far busier than the cars that are coming and going. And I go in and out of there all the time, and I have never been more than 30 seconds at the stop sign to move on. So I am against a roundabout, and as you say, all because of the children's safety and everybody else's safety walking in that area. Okay?
Thank you.
And I love the neighborhood, by the way.
Thank you. Mark, Mark Solo?
The answer for the fountain is put it in the middle of the roundabout. Just kidding, don't start my time yet, that was a joke, okay.
It's already started, sorry.
Mark Solo, been here 32 years, live at 730 Oak Hollow Lane. I cross that intersection daily. I lead three bike, three bike rides a week. Two of them, I go through a roundabout at Chin Chapel behind Target in Flower Mound. And every time we go through there, we have a pucker moment, because cars don't know what to do with the roundabout. If you didn't see European Vacation, you don't know why, but people just do weird things. We've had so many close calls in the roundabout. With a stop sign, you have to stop. It's safer. And yeah, the, the fire engines, I know, we need a fire station that's over where it was proposed before, because that's where all the, they go. They drive by my house, and they don't stop, they don't do a full stop. I don't want them to. They do a California stop, and that's fine. But the biggest thing I see is, I think Google Maps must be directing people to get around traffic, to go down Highland Shores. And if we put roundabouts so they don't have to stop, it's going to be, it's going to be like Traffic City going through our neighborhood. Have we thought about that? That's important. The history real quick, over 20 years ago, I came here when my kids were little, and that's a funnel at Hillside, the kids going to school have to cross there, and there was no stop signs and there was no crosswalks. And I did an engineering study myself and presented it to the city council, and in two weeks, we had stop signs and crosswalks, because I said, if you don't do it, a kid's going to get killed. I already know of a kid that got his arm broken, another kid that got his bike run over, and I said, if you don't do it, the blood's going to be on your hands, because it's going to happen. And they put the stop signs up. And I went through this whole thing, I was rejected originally, because they paid some engineering firm a bunch of money to put the rubber thing out there and said it didn't meet enough traffic to put up the stop signs. Well, after I showed the, the engineering reason that cars don't have enough time coming down the hill, and around that corner, they don't have enough time, a kid's going to get killed at one point if you don't do something about it. So it got done. Guess how the stop sign at Timbercrest happened? He saw that we got one at Hillside, and one guy came and said, I walk my dog across Highland Shores, and I want a stop sign too. That's all he did, and he got the four-way stop. So that, take the one out at Timbercrest, that guy's probably gone now. And one, one last thing, if you're coming, like on this chart, if you're going west and you want to turn right, because of the Oak Hollow's really close, it's very dangerous. If, if they don't have to stop first, it's going to, there's going to be a problem there, because they'll just hit the roundabout and just keep going, and it's, it's very difficult when you walk your dog to get across there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Jay Hayden?
I'm Jay Hayden, I live on 2713 Null Court. I've only been here 31 years, Mark's got me beat by a year. I walk through that intersection at least once a day, if not twice, stay with my dogs, and I drive through it many times a day, more than I like. The number of children going through that is amazing. You just, kids and roundabouts don't get along together, it's a safety hazard. Everybody's said that, I reiterate it, everybody's been more eloquent, so I'm just going to hang it up here. There's one more thing that hasn't been mentioned. The speeds on Highland Shores Boulevard are 30 miles an hour. A lot of people push it, I've seen cars going a lot faster than that. Highland Village Police do a commendable job keeping the traffic slow on that road. You start taking stop signs out, they don't have enough force, enough people to cover what we need to have to keep that thing slow. The roundabout's just going to have a speedway, you might as well change it to Highland Shore Speedway if you, if you put the roundabout in. So, thanks much, I'm out of here.
Thank you, yeah. I think you're going to get the gold star. Okay, Marty Franks?
Hi, I'm Marty Franks. My husband Fred and I have lived here for 31 years. Mark still has us beat also. Live at 2705 Woodside Drive. We are about three streets from that Hillside intersection, so we're very familiar with how it operates, how it's always functioned, also before it even had stop signs. This is the first time that, that I've been able to see even any kind of information. I've looked at information, just as Ms. Margaret had said, I've tried to find information for it. So, just to repeat, communication has been very poor, in my opinion, on this whole situation. It's either been buried, and as I started exploring, I felt a little bit betrayed by Highland Village. I love this city. We've been here, we love it, we'd love to stay here the rest of our lives. And so, but at the same time, when you're putting your faith in people that you feel are making decisions for your city, there are a lot of decisions, as he was covering a lot of things, and roads and sidewalks and whatever, those are amazing things. When it gets to an issue with safety, with timing, none of those issues have been presented or brought up. Should they have been? Some people may say no. I say that they should have, that this, at least we should have had the opportunity to be able to explore, be aware. And then tonight, as I learned, the main reason, not safety, that was stated, I was appalled. It was the timing and the services. Okay, so I am personally familiar with the services in the city, the response times. My husband, who's sitting behind me, had a major heart attack, January 2023. Since then, the ambulance has come to my house at least three times, maybe four, for VTEC events, for heart-related things. And I'm telling you, those services were at our house within minutes. First of all, there was only one time, they did make a wrong turn, and they were a little bit delayed, but Officer Oliver's son, I can't remember his name, his son, not, not officer, which, he was there with my husband, walking him through, within, I would say, a minute of me calling. I'm still on the phone talking and he is at my door. So, the, the argument that say, that there's a timing issue, to me, just as Ms. Rhonda so eloquently stated, there's a trade-off. What are we missing? How are we, how many minutes are we behind in whatever this code is that we have to follow? At what expense for everything else that is happening? We have got to weigh those options and make a decision. I am absolutely adamantly opposed to any roundabouts in our city, because I believe everybody that's going on 407 will find it's much easier to speed through on our flybys. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila Jeffrey?
He couldn't be here, but Sheila Jeffrey is. Okay. So Sheila Jeffrey, 604 Timbercrest Circle. And please do not allow the roundabout on Highland Shores and Hillside intersection. We learned about this proposed roundabout through social media on the Nextdoor app, and we were not notified by the city or allowed to vote or asked to express our concerns or opinions until now. This is, as others have finally stated, the pool, a park, that is at this four-way stop, and it's our busiest pedestrian intersection. And I cannot even imagine how a roundabout would work with the pedestrians, the bike riders, the dog walkers, the electric scooters, and unsupervised children trying to cross to get to the pool, park, tennis courts, playground, and if this was a roundabout. And we've lived here for over 20 years, and what, what I've started to call Highland Shores is the cut-through, because more and more people, I guess, on Google are getting instructed from I-35 to Long Prairie, also known as Village Parkway. And even though we have signs that post "no through trucks," I see and I follow large trucks cutting through our neighborhood, but they never turn to deliver anything, and they don't stop in our neighborhood for a reason, they just cut straight through. And this is only with a roundabout, at least a four-way stop would pause them and slow them down. But they're only using our neighborhood boulevard for a shortcut to miss traffic. And the four-way stops at least slow the traffic periodically. And a roundabout would only enhance their travel time. So I do thank y'all for your service to Highland Village, but, and please consider our concerns as the people who live here and abide here in this neighborhood, and not those that just cut through. Okay?
Thank you. Leslie, Leslie Andrews?
Good evening, I'm Leslie Andrews, I live at 2890 Hillside Highway, kidding. Good to see you all. Thank you for your response to my email today, always appreciate that, and thank you for your great questions and experience. I, this is a voluntary customer service role at times, I'm sure, so hopefully I can add a little bit of light. But just to add on to what everybody else has said, I see the perception of anything, like I don't really just want to punt this issue to another intersection on Highland Shores, because as somebody who's constantly walking these streets, I see vehicular traffic having the perception, especially that Highland Shores Boulevard has some additional sort of right-of-way, because the other two streets are neighborhood streets. So I'm picturing an impact of, you know, more minor incidences, and then what impact is that going to have when there's an emergency and they need to get through, and how do you get through there? I don't think you can, right? So, anyway, that, that's one concern, and then the other is that I believe back in 2023, when this was first raised, I don't remember who asked, but somebody requested that Mr. Kristen provide us with some examples. that Mr. Kristin provide us with some examples of roundabouts in similar situations, i.e. neighborhoods. So, you know, I'm always bringing up fiscal responsibility and imagine my surprise tonight to come and see many copies of a 2010 full-color text, or I mean highway brochure with not a single picture of anything that's representative of Highland Shores Boulevard. So, I mean, right there, it's like, we are comparing apples to prunes. Like, we can't, it just needs to go. So unless we are going for Guinness World Record to be like the smallest city to spend the money to have a first, it's not even gonna be a roundabout here, y'all. It's like a loop-de-loop. Let's just call it what it is. Okay? So that, my main concern is like, we are just not, we, we keep, it's deja vu and I hate for him to keep doing the same presentation when it is actually on HVTV and we could all gone back and save some time tonight. So, anyway, please, I'm, I'm opposed and, and you know, sometimes just acknowledgement of an email goes a long way. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Leslie. Okay, I am going Babic? Ba, ah, I'm not even going to attempt the last name. Rez, Razivi? You get to say it. Razavi? Okay.
Okay, my name is Babak Razavi, 3060 Oak Hollow Drive. I had prepared something to say, but I guess everybody said whatever they wanted to say, so I don't want to waste time on that. I just wanted to add one more thing. On all the things that they handed out to us, the pictures, the drawings, there's four crosses on each side. One, two, three, four. Over there, there's only three. Have they done any study to see how that works if they have cut out a crossing on one side? Because right now we have four crossings on that cross-section. So we recap the kids that come down from the north side and they want to go to school, they're gonna go to the right, then to the left, then to the right, and you think it's gonna do that? I don't think so. So if the manager can be kind enough to do a study to see if this alters these pictures for us, to like that, what will be the effect on the safety? That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth, Ruth Solo?
Thank you all for having us. I want to thank Charlotte Wilcox. Thank you so much and for being responsive to us by email. I really appreciated that. Rhonda responded to me and I think she's the only one I emailed. So I just have a few observations about the intersection and almost everybody's covered everything. So what I do want to say is that when we moved into the neighborhood 32 years ago, there was only one way into the neighborhood and it was down Highland Village Road, a little two-lane road, and then down Highland Shores Boulevard and it ended. There was not a cut-through at that time. And our neighborhood was designed as a walkable community, really lots of tra, you know, the trail system and it's awesome and that's why people buy near the lake. They love our community. I love it. I just want to make it just very clear that apparently we're being, we're a drive-through community now and I wish, I mean, the roundabout, everybody's covered things about that, but we go across that intersection every day, walking our dog and sometimes dogs when we're dog-sitting, but the cars come through so quickly and most of them don't live in our neighborhood and it is pretty dangerous. And I wish we had more police support that would pull them over and we could sure use the income for our small city, our town. Right? We could use that. So, but anyway, that's my observation. I think stop signs cause the traffic to stop and, and it's harder for them to speed up. It's a better idea than a roundabout where they just keep their speed going. And I think that's it. We love our community and we love all of you. Thank you so much.
Dave Rush?
Hello, Mayor Wilcox and council members. I'm Dave Rush, 715 Oak Hollow Lane. And I'm gonna trump the other folks. I've been here 34 years. I think I'm the winner. But anyway, I've got the Oak Hollow Lane posse over here with me. I want to thank all these moms for coming out and talking to y'all. So what's gonna happen if you put that roundabout in, these folks are gonna start driving their kids to school and you're gonna have more and more traffic and it's just gonna be totally crazy. So we're all against this and we hope you listen to us and do the right thing. So, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Dave. Appreciate it. John, John Hicks? John, you get to be the last speaker unless there's somebody else out there.
Can I go longer?
No, you can't. I'm sorry. I do want to prac, I do want to push this button up here, but, no.
Well, thanks for having me, mayor and council members. Everyone did a great job of expressing, I think, the concerns of the community. One thing I'd like to address, because I have a background in construction and a background in public safety, I was in the fire department for a while. I heard some talk about, I guess the origination of this idea came from, or bettering response times to the west side of the city. Am I right on that? And we've heard tonight, people say that we're not sure how this is gonna affect response times. We don't know how, how much it's gonna make those better or not. I think if the police chief and fire chief had their way, they'd get another police station, another fire station. Putting a roundabout in and this fly-by lane are Band-Aids for response time problems. They're not gonna fix the response times that we need. And what it does do, as everyone's stated, is it, it increases the volume of traffic because we're increasing the efficiency of traffic flow. So, that particular intersection, as I've heard tonight and through other people, I don't think that intersection's had an accident in like 10 years. So what problem are we really solving for, is my question. And it doesn't seem like there is one and somebody else echoed the same thing earlier. But again, if our goal is to better response times for emergency services, then let's put emergency services on that side of the city rather than have 50,000-pound apparatuses moving through an intersection that we're not even sure the speed limit is, right? Is that what he testified earlier, said earlier, was that that speed limit seems kind of gray. And I don't think you want an apparatus driver wheeling that thing around through a fly-by or a roundabout at any kind of increased speed. And by the way, if those apparatus are trying to get to the west side of the city in a hurry, I don't think that they're gonna slow down in the places where those crosswalks are enough. I think they're gonna slow down for the roundabout, just like most drivers. So, I'm opposed. I appreciate you having me. But again, I think the solution to this problem, if the problem is actually a response time for first responders, the solution is putting emergency services on that side of the city, not trying to increase, increase traffic flow. Cause all's, all we're doing is making it more attractive to the commuter and we're not a commuter town. Thank you.
Mr. Hicks Miller? That was the last speaker? Yes.
I'd like to say just a couple words. I know we're not supposed to respond anything through, but I want to just make a slight correction. I've been on council seven years, so I've been in part of all of these discussions from the beginning. And there's a soundbite that has been repeated a couple times, that the road was not designed for safety. I'm talking road in Toto, not a specific intersection. When we started the discussions and if you look at all of the road design, narrowing of traffic lanes, calming of traffic lanes, widening of bike lanes, those are all for safety. So I don't want anyone to think that this project that the city's spending money on did not have safety first. Okay? Now, roundabout, okay, I will say my mind has been opened a lot to discussion that we did not have. Say that honestly, because I've been in every one of those meetings. Okay? We looked at throughput on those, but I'm just saying, don't walk away saying designs were not safety first, because the city is a very safe city. There's crosswalks, there's lanes, there's markings, everything to keep our kids safe. And Mr. Kristin and his department do what we ask them to do, keep it safe. Roads are, lanes are narrowed. We're gonna put bigger medians in. We're taking sightlines and making them better. So that's there. Don't confuse that with whether or not a roundabout is there or not. We can have that debate and we've heard that. So I just want that to be cleared because the roundabout was not specifically for safety. The road is for safety. Okay? Just walk away from that, please. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything? Because I do. So, again, thank you all for coming and thank you for your feedback. And I, I've written down a lot of things. I was on council in 2014 when we challenged, when we had issues with response times. Chief was not here, the chief we haven't, it was not the chief that we, we had here. And we needed to look at all things. It wasn't response times necessarily to Highland Shores. We have on the other side of 2499 Chapel Hills and Rolling Hills and so, and the shops, we have all the way over to Chin Chapel. So we have to look at from 35 all the way over to Chin Chapel. That is, that's our city. So it wasn't necessarily, can we get to Highland Shores, a resident in Highland Shores in the NFPA, I think is what the, is that the number, the thing, response time? Okay? We have done, we, they have done a great job in trimming some of that time off of their response times. Their turnout times now are, are great. So I was here in 2014 when we said, we need to look at that. Everybody wants a fire station on the other side of town, or an ambulance station on the other side of town. Nobody wants to pay taxes, more taxes to have that done. And that's kind of where, where we are right now. We're at build-out. And if you set, if you were here for our, for our budget earlier, if you watch it, you'll, you'll see that we're at build-out. So we're having to really watch our pennies. Okay? So, I just wanted that. I think some of the confusion was, and I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, was, I believe Scott, you stated, it wasn't looked at for pedestrian safety. It was looked at, at for response times when we first started this back in 2014.
In 2014, there were pedestrian counts and traffic counts performed in the entire corridor, but it was for...
But I want to echo what John said. Staff and, and council, previous councils, current council, safety is our number one thing. Okay? I, I understood, when, when Bren came, when Ms. Hague came, I'm sorry, came and spoke a month ago about this, I wasn't, I hadn't been on council, so I didn't, I hadn't participated in those conversations. I, I wasn't really up to speed on this. That's why I said, I want this back on, on the council so we can look at it and we can invite the residents in and get feedback from them. Because while it's been there and people have said, you know, it was buried and, and we are very transparent. It was about redoing Highland Shores Boulevard. We are going to redo Highland Shores Boulevard. It's in, there is, well, if consensus is, we are going to have to repave Highland Shores Boulevard. Okay? I mean, there's issues that have to be taken care of there. So that's, that is. Here are my, my questions and I, Scott, these are really gonna be directed more at Chief and you and anybody else, but my concerns. What is one roundabout and a flyby gonna do for our response times? I think Rhonda asked that first. I could see where if we put in five roundabouts, that our response, they're gonna fly through there, they don't have to slow down. My husband was a firefighter for 37 and a half years and I asked him about it and said, okay, so if you've got lights and sirens going, do you have to stop? I know Chief said tonight, policy is they have to stop. But I'm not sure, you know. I'll just say in Lewisville, they slow down, they make sure nobody's in the intersections, they make sure nobody's crossing. So Chief, I, I know our guys follow policy every time. So, but what is one roundabout and, and flyby gonna do? So, what do you do when the fire truck's coming? Okay, so I freak out when police car comes behind me or a fire truck comes behind me and you're supposed to move over. But now you've reduced these lanes, where do you go? You go up into the sidewalk, go up onto the, you know, I'm looking, I'm thinking at this hillside thing right here, I'm going westbound and now they're behind me and blaring their horn. I don't know where, you know, I'm gonna scoot over into, onto the sidewalk. You know, at least now, I guess we'll go into the bike lane. Mark, don't be riding at the time. Time to take you out, okay? But, but I have concern about that. The flyby, I, I asked for the previous presentation that took place, I think back in 2022, I looked at that. I am totally opposed to the flyby. I just, I think that is just, that isn't, and I, I think I've demonstrated it to several people and I, I even, I, I said, if you're stopped here and you're gonna go left and somebody stopped here and they want to go right and yet Charlotte Wilcox is coming and she's doing the flyby, this person's turning, guess what? One of us is gonna wind up in that pond and it's gonna probably be me, because I'm gonna be the one that's gonna be flying by. So, yeah, I just, I, I think that that is crazy. And I just go back to, is it, is it necessary? That's where I'm coming from. I see all of this. It makes sense with, to me, a little bit more now. I love the cut-through at Lakeside where people are not having to do the U-turn to go, to go on that street. I like that. I just, it's safety and, and those, those kids crossing right there to go to, to school, to, to the park, to the pool, wherever. It's just, I'm very, very concerned about that. And so, that's, guys, that's my, that's my opinion. I'm sticking to it. So, anybody else want to throw theirs out? Because they are looking for direction. Staff is looking for direction.
If, if I may?
Yes, absolutely.
Cause I think we can, we can debate for two hours. Let's look at the roundabout. My mind has changed. Okay? I supported it, looked at it, looked at every one of them. But I'm listening tonight. So based upon that, I would say recommendation from one council member is that we go back to the four-way stop.
So, yeah, we just, I need a, I need a consensus if nobody...
We need a consensus.
The other part too, and, and Scott has mentioned this from the beginning, direction. We, we had our direction to where we kind of got to this point. I'm super proud of our residents coming and speaking up. I think it's somewhat lost in, in this world now. Whenever decisions are made by local governments and state governments, that the voice of the people kind of get muffled and silenced out. But for us here in our city, being the size that we are, what a great opportunity to come and have your voice listened to, heard, and then see change amongst, amongst your elected officials instantly. We, we don't get that satisfaction or, or, or kind of that result in a lot of places. And so I applaud you all for coming in tonight and speaking and making your voices heard. Going back to, obviously kicking the roundabout out, but with what we have going on in there, is there any way, and, and I thought about this, is those medians that are coming in all four directions, Scott, if we are still with the four-way stop expanding, having those medians as extending closer to the center line of where the, the crossing is, to where when kids and people do cross, that they have the same amount of space to where they don't have to cross all at once. But we're pulling the medians closer to that midline to where if they do cross or if they have a scooter and it, whatever, it malfunctions, right? That they still have that potential in that safety, that five or six feet of safety spot in the middle. Is that a possibility if we keep that as a four-way?
I think what you're describing is a hooded intersection. That is controlling traffic movements. So you either take away a right turn or a left turn with a hooded intersection. We can design medians and median crossings. We have to design them to ADA. I would not recommend a hooded crossing at that intersection to control turning movements.
Can we do the cut there at Lakeside? Still?
Yes.
I mean, make that where they don't have to, people don't have to go up and do a U-turn and go back?
And that's still part of it.
That's still, that's still functions.
Just removing, but, but let's talk about the flyby. Oh, I'm sorry, wait, I've got, I've got other people that need to...
But let's, let's try to make a decision instead of re-engineering. Let's say, roundabout goes or not goes. Cause Scott, we're not seven up here to engineer his job.
Right. Consensus, well, do y'all want to, so, do y'all want to say something before we get a consensus on that?
I, I just want to say that I, I agree that the, the roundabout...
I just want to say that I agree that the, the roundabout in general should go, but that specific location is the absolute worst place you could put it. I also think for the flyby, it should go because this, from what I'm learning more, this is based on a lot of 2014 data. That was 11 years ago. That was before micro mobility. That was before Highland Village Elementary was shut down. So we're, we're dealing with a new set of data that we have not collected. And so, and I'm against both. And from an engineering standpoint, we're at a point where the engineer can make these changes and, and it is, it's, it's existing conditions. We're not re-grading a bunch of stuff that this isn't, for an engineer to make these changes is not a substantial effect to the plans. So we're not asking for them to move mountains. We're, we're not. But I don't want any squished lizards. I'm sorry. We have too many kids and we're too vibrant of a community and we love our trails and we are, we're known for our trails. I don't want squished lizards.
Thank you. Brian, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I do. I wanted to kind of echo what everybody else is saying. I was an advocate of, still am an advocate of, of roundabouts. I like the idea of them. I think the, what you've incorporated in the plan with the narrow lanes, the wider bike paths can achieve some calming efforts through the intersections. Thank you, everybody that emailed, spoke, we really appreciate it. I took to heart everything you had to say. I may not have responded to you on your emails, but I read every one of them. I walk the intersection, I walk the trails all the time, constantly out there. I drive through the intersection quite often. But I specifically this week, I stopped on a walk and I turned around. One, one email brought up a point that I never considered. And if you look back from east to west after you cross the intersection, there is a rise in the roadway. And the first thing that came to my mind was you have a vehicle, whether it's an emergency vehicle or a, a, a citizen or non-citizen running through there at a high rate of speed. Other than a yellow and black sign, they won't know there's a roundabout. And a lot, there are a lot of people that travel at a high rate of speed on that roadway. So I took that into consideration. And the more I thought about what was being said in the emails and that particular issue, I too changed my mind. I, I think they're appropriate. I think they're very helpful. They will reduce response times. But I'm not sure that Highland Shores Boulevard is the place for them. So I'm, I'm with the rest of the council. I think we need to, to remove it from this intersection and kind of take another look at this. Thank you all.
So Sean, did you...
Yeah, again, thank you all for coming out. I've heard a lot of comparisons, well, they've got roundabouts in Flower Mound. Well, we're not Flower Mound. Our road also is in four lanes east direction and the roundabouts in Flower Mound don't have the pedestrian traffic that we have here, right? So you really can't compare it there. Then people would say, well, on the other side of Chin Chapel, you've got a roundabout up there by Orchid Hill. Well, I think that's more for decorations. I really don't see them having a lot of traffic out there that, that needs to slow down on Orchid Hill. You might, but you know, I mean, there's, there's, I mean, there's not even sidewalks out there. So you know, to me, it's, there's a place and purpose for it, right? Flower Mound has them because of traffic, right? Because they're on these very high traffic flows. Yes, we have traffic here, but you know, we, it's, it's a small road. It's not a wide road, right? We don't have four lanes in each, each direction going down into two lanes each direction. You know, to me, it's just, I don't, I don't think a roundabout, honestly, I, I wouldn't like a roundabout anywhere on Highland Village Road. I'm, I'm not a fan of them on small roads like this. Something else that's probably going to sound weird is I think some of our roads represent Highland Village. And the reason I say that is if you look at 2499, 2499 is a beautiful road. It's got a very large median with great Highland Village signs. When you cross over 407 going north, you know you're in Highland Village. To me, Highland Shores Boulevard is another one of those roads, right? I mean, you know you're in Highland Village, you know the trees, the trails, the hills, the winding of the road. Yes, it's, it needs to be repaved, it needs to be redone. I think what we've done is a phase three, that's by Highland Village Road, the, the newer section that we did? Is that the phase three that was just done? It goes one, two, three? To me, I think that turned out great. I mean, it looks like a racetrack, it makes me want to go fast. But I mean, you know, the markings, the bike lanes, you know, there was nothing done to disrupt the nature of the road itself as well. So I think, you know, if you kind of continue that, you know, the, all the way down, then you know, that, that is kind of where I stand with it.
So it sounds like consensus is from council to remove the roundabout at Lakeside. Now, we need to discuss the flyby.
I just...
What?
You did what we asked you to do four years ago, so thank you. We took more input. So it's on us, okay? I'm the only one that was here at that time. So there's a collective us.
Don't think you're hurting my feelings and...
No, no. And now we changed it. That's why we listened. So, but again...
We're going to save money and put it toward a fire station on the other side of town.
People love that.
Okay, and so I think we need a consensus on the flyby at Briar Hill.
I'm against it.
Okay. Well, I would like to make a comment, but that was the one thing I did not say. I kept thinking about the flyby. And then I finally referenced a flyby that I know, and I've seen two of them, one in Dallas and one in Lewisville. It's a short one, but there are a lot of problems associated with this flyby in Lewisville. It's at Main Street, and I know it's being reconstructed right now, but it's Main Street and 35, southbound Service Road, turning west onto Main Street. There's a concrete curb, you can turn freely, you can turn and merge into that. Everyone coming across that bridge is merging into the right lane, into the lane you're going into. That is a flyby in my, in my mind, and it's a very dangerous one. And we have the same issue here, I think, at Briar Hill with children walking across. There are a lot of children that walk across that Highland Shores Boulevard at that intersection. They stream through the neighborhood, over the grass, and they cross. I've seen it all the time. So I think, I do believe that a flyby in that, or I don't want to say a flyby, a free lane.
Well, that's what they called it. Isn't that what you called it?
That's what they call it, but I know it's, it's not, it's, it's a negative annotation to it, but I, I do think it's a bad, bad location.
Council, rest of council?
I just got a comment because I drive that every day of the week, twice a day, going to DKH. So I love getting the turn lanes, thank you very much, on both sides of the parking lot. That's been a great one. I make that left turn every day and traffic is backed up, so you can't make the left turn. Personally, I like the flyby, but stop sign with a straight lane is still a flyby, but you still have to stop. So I'm ambivalent on that. The other, other improvements I think are phenomenal. So I'm going to be neutral on the flyby and defer to council.
Sean, Kevin, what do y'all think?
I'm a no.
I don't see a need for it, to be honest with you. I mean, we're not Lewisville, we're not 35 Main Street. I mean, I drive it multiple times and I don't have a problem stopping and going.
I do think Kevin made a good point about Highland Village Elementary is going to be coming over there. But are we so, in such a hurry anymore that we don't want to stop? I mean, that, that's a sad situation when we don't want to stop at a stop sign because we're in such a hurry. So there may be a little bit of traffic, but, and that was a good point, but I just, I just see that as a, as a problem, a huge issue, so.
I mean, that, that intersection is busier than any other intersection on Highland Shores Boulevard, okay? So I think going straight through on the right side is safe. There is no risk for people through there because the lane is a through. So if anything would help fire and police, that would be one. Because again, sitting in that traffic every day, okay? People are backed up to turn left. So I think going straight, I don't think that's a risk.
But it's not a two lane to go there. You're going to, if those people are backed up and they're in that turn lane to, to turn onto Briar Hill...
But this new design has that and there's enough room for it.
For how many cars? What's the stack on the cars to turn left from Highland?
It's your standard 400, looks like about, yeah, so almost 400 feet of decelerating lane.
But isn't the impact really on Briar Hill, reconstructing the entrance into DKH?
Right, that's going to be relieved.
Right. Which is the biggest problem, turning left onto Briar Hill off of Highland Shores, you can't because they're stacked and trying to get into DKH.
But this just lets people go on...
Right.
East to west.
Through.
Okay, so it's, to me, I don't see it as a safety issue. I just see it as people going through there. Right now, they will stop, put a stop sign and you still got to...
Yeah, and the issue really is the children that are walking across the street.
No, no one walks across the street.
Yeah, they do.
Off Highland Shores Boulevard.
Yeah, they do.
I see one guy...
Quite a bit, quite a bit.
Wait, wait, one guy coming up from the lake.
No, there's a lot of children.
And there's no crosswalk.
Yeah, there's a lot of children that walk that street.
Okay. At there?
They do.
Kevin, did you, did you want to say anything?
No, it's, it goes back to it, the, it was brought, the design itself was brought together as, as a whole. So, and we've had the opportunity to discuss and get everyone's input. I think we're, we're one of the new, the newbies going that direction. And I've run and walked in my circle going down Highland Shores and have never had an issue with that stop sign being there. And as we, as we push more towards the, the safety side of things, which we always do, then it's, to me, it's fine staying a stop sign. I think it gives the opportunity for the original, I think the original extending the sidewalk up on the north side, I think, potential that we took out because it wasn't unnecessary with that flyby. So it just gives us more access on that north side with that additional sidewalk if we leave that stop sign there.
That would be my recommendation. Take the flyby out is what the direction I heard. So my recommendation would be to add in or leave the crosswalk there.
Yes, yes, put it back.
And then take our, also take our 2014 engineering study of the area and expand on that with current data with the micro mobility ordinances taken into effect and, and look at the corridor for any safety issues.
I think you heard it right.
Yep.
Hi, I appreciate, council.
Can I have one more thing, please?
Sure.
I would like to make a request of the citizens. As much as we appreciate y'all sending your emails and coming to speak with us, we really want to hear from you. But I want to address a question that was asked of us addressing the lack of transparency, which we've tried to explain. I, I think there's opportunities for the community to get involved with the city here. We do try to publish things as much as possible in your utility buildings. We have mailers, a lot of this information is there. If you want to know, if you don't want to come to every meeting, that's fine. But if you want to find out information, you can go on the website and you can pick up the agenda, the video that night or even the day after, a year after, two years after. You can always find it online and you can see what's going on if you don't have the time to come join us. A lot of, we have, we have a gentleman and lady sometime that come and they'll write for either Community Impact or they'll write for the newspaper in Flower Mound. She's here with us tonight and we thank you for that. But there is, the information's out there and, and I, and I would encourage you all to search that information out because we don't want to have this concern again. We want you to be involved. We don't want you to come at the last minute and say, we weren't told about this because we do try to give you the information. So I encourage you to come to the meetings. If not, please look online and get the information on the meetings each time. This particular issue was brought up as a reconstruction road, but your concerns are only about the roundabout. And I can understand why you wouldn't be able to see that in an agenda item. It's a reconstruction, you had no idea. But it was in the information going back from 2020, 21, whenever we started the roundabout. So I encourage you to get involved. I encourage you to, to, to look online and get the information. It is out there for you. Thank you.
Okay.
And just one quick reminder, we do have two shows monthly, us.
Yes.
Every second and fourth Tuesday of the month. We start a regular session at seven and work session at six.
And reservations not required.
Reservations are required.
All right.
And it's usually pretty open seating.
Okay, we are, we have...
...question, which may not be a severe probability issue, but with all the kids from this side, they're going to be walking or riding their bikes, they're going to be on this sidewalk. Can we get across the...
We're actually, we have a survey out and we've asked everybody to, that, there are signs out that you can say, and they, we've asked what, where they're going to be going, where they're going to be crossing. And we're looking at, at crossing guards here and at Willow Creek, so.
There's QR codes on the signs.
On the signs, on the trails, yes.
And you can go to the Parks Department and I think online and click the link. But yeah, just when you're walking around, take a clicky-click and it rings you up.
Is the survey over?
And you do it.
Sorry. Oh, it's also...
It's in Community Impact.
Okay, all right. So we are going, we are, we are finished. We're not going to adjourn because we have to go into late work session, more late work session. We're going to go back into the training room and finish what we were, we had started earlier. So we are going to take a 10-minute break and, or five-minute break and then we'll go back in there. But guys, thank y'all so much for coming. We appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good to see you again. Good to see you again.
Have any unmarked vehicle for that kind of work or purpose. So, we're asking for another vehicle to be out at our feet.
We decide a Dodge Ram or Chevy?
Whatever they give us is what I put all of them up there because we don't really control it under lease program. They, we get whatever's available.
Tesla.
They've caused it out of Chevy.
Tesla.
Tesla?
No, they are heavier and more wear tear on our roads, which means we have to repair more often.
Do we have to have a fire blanket?
And then the police wouldn't want to drive it, so, because it's ugly.
Never ends, doesn't it?
Turning their man card.
Can you radiate yourself?
I think our department's up. I think Chief's gonna change his and say he wants a station on the west side.
Too soon.
Me too.
So, so the first item, it's a, it's a small price item, but the V strut is used for vehicles when we go on wrecks, where they're on their side or upside down. And, and the idea there is, is when we get there, one of the first things that we have to do is stabilize the incident. And so, we're able to use this, this model with one person deploying it. So, our minimum staffing is five, so we'll have three on the engine, two on the ambulance. So, your ambulance crew is taking care of patient needs. Uh, your engineer may be if we deploy a hose line, pumping the apparatus. So, that currently requires the other two personnel to stabilize the vehicle. We can do that with one person and use that other person to help out with patient care or whatever else is needed.
Those are cool.
They really are, uh, yeah.
No, move on.
Because we beat you?
Because you beat us.
So, the current multi-rack.
The challenge was one of those.
Is a little bit small. We have seven-person staffing. Uh, it's starting to break down. Uh, one I've been told is, is about fifteen years old. And I think it was used when we got it, uh, but we've got different pieces of that that are starting to break down. So, our personnel came up with this that can accommodate more personnel. It, it, it's really a cool thing when you have a shift. Uh, and our personnel are great about getting out and working out together. It's, uh, it's just a great thing to have for that. Were there any other questions about the radio?
Can you go back just real fast to the radio? I'm not gonna, we're not gonna drag this out because I know everybody's tired, but you were only replacing?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three portables?
Yes. So, so the idea was, was instead of attacking this, and this is an old slide when we first started, uh, in the given direction in their initial, uh, meeting, that's how we got to, to where we were at. Uh, but the idea was to break it out into manageable pieces, uh, to where it's not a big hit.
We're just not used to that, Chief. We're not used to people wanting to break it down to manageable pieces.
I love, I love replacements.
We have police that come in and want everything and they want it right now. I want the gold ticket.
Um, so. So, outdoor warning sirens. Currently, we have six outdoor warning sirens. Four of those are twenty, uh, years old or greater. Uh, we also did a sound study in May and the recommendation was adding two additional sirens. So, again, to break this up, what I talked about with Paula was looking at adding two this year, and that could be either adding the two additional or just replacing two. But to bring that down to a more manageable piece than trying to add six sirens in one year. Uh, one of the things that we are looking at is this Commander One, and there's a couple of options for that. And what it does is it's got one piece, it's a software, uh, it's tied into, uh, it's called AccuWeather. And so, what it can do is you have personnel that get notifications from it. So, if it's recommending based off of our criteria that we activate the sirens for our location, it can send out a notification. They also have models that you could, you could take that with an adjustment to where it auto activates. I would want to look at what the criteria is for, not the criteria, but the, uh, timeframe out for that. Uh, because what you don't want is to sound it with it coming and it dissipates before it gets to us or there's a change. You, you, you kind of gotta find that, that sweet spot. But that does have that capability. And, uh, from the perspective of someone that monitors it twenty-four-seven, uh, that's a huge help just for those pop-up events that at least you're getting a notification.
Is the eighty-five for the proposed replacement in twenty-six or is it for all three years?
So, the eighty-five, it covers two sirens and it also covers the Commander One. And this would also be upgrading our poles from, uh, the wood poles to the steel poles, which is recommended.
Uh, when you say cellular stealth, you were redundant, so what are we doing here?
So, what that does is, uh, when you, you're talking about the signals to and from, uh, it, it just adds that cellular redundancy to make sure that your siren activates when you push the button. So, these are the locations of our current six, and here are the places where they recommended that we have two additional ones.
The, uh, that, that will cover the interior of the other radiuses. What about the exterior of the radiuses?
So, that's something that I would like to discuss further with the, uh, the company, uh, to discuss how, how that would happen. Would that require taking and spacing these out a little bit more to cover that versus adding additional ones to those?
Are these, uh, are our sirens? I know our sirens, it, it's really, the weather system is specific for areas. Um, but those on the, let's say, look at those on the east side. Close proximity to Louisville, do Louisville sirens go off approximately at the same time and do they cover those areas?
Yes, they do, because I hear them both. However, sometimes Louisville goes off and Highland Village does it, and sometimes Highland Village goes off and Louisville doesn't.
That was what I was concerned about because it is a geographical issue, really.
It is.
Yeah, it's, it's almost, I think, by zip code because we're like, what the, yeah. It, but we do, because we get, we can hear both of them equally, the same loudness in my house. So, we get to spend doubly the amount of time in the bathtub.
You know, we have, we have exposure on the west side as well, so it's not just that, that particular area.
Area between the green and the yellow, what does that represent? Because I'm in it.
Yeah, so.
You don't hear it.
So, this is where the sirens are, this is the coverage of it. And so, I, I would need to double check on the yellow versus the green as far as the recommended decibel.
Okay. Because I can hear it, I mean, I can, I can, I can hear the one that's going off.
It's just the intensity that.
What's that part of that?
Yeah.
I'm just glad you don't.
Yeah, of course, you do have a visible and sometimes you may or may, you may hear more, you may hear less.
And so, the last time when Fire Mountain and Louisville sounded, we did not, uh, it didn't hit the criteria.
Nope, but we were in the bathtub.
Yeah. And, and, and I'm not sure if Louisville, Fire Mountain, geographically, if they're large enough to have quadrants. So, in University Park, you might would hear Dallas sounding sirens. Well, they had multiple, multiple quadrants because they're not gonna sound on the south side if they're sounding the north side.
As long as you don't start speaking through those things like Frisco does, it scares the crap. Have you heard it?
Oh, we, we, yeah.
Oh, my. Yeah, nineteen eighty-four, all of them.
Yeah, I would be interested to see if, if relocating, pushing those and expanding those, if we get full coverage with, with the, uh, adding the two, right? To get full coverage, full decibel coverage and not just map coverage, but to make sure that they are heard. It'd be interesting to see what they could do with that.
Uh, so, so the next item is Wildland Tech Gear. So, all of our personnel, uh, by their job descriptions are required to be certified. Uh, we're not current. So, back around twenty-twenty, we stopped with tip mist deployments, and I think that's when, uh, with turnover in our firefighter rank, uh, that just was not kept up with. We're currently in, in the process of getting, uh, everyone back up to that certification level. And so, that's for us, uh, with our Wildland Urban Interface, uh, with what we, with what we have. That can also be used for getting back into tip mist deployments, uh, something that's very much desired, uh, with our firefighters. Uh, gives them the opportunity to be deployed to, uh, events like with what happened up in, uh, the Panhandle and, and stuff like that. It's, uh, incredible training experience for them to go out there to have those experiences and then when we do have something here, uh, to apply it here. Those tip mist deployments also, by the way, are fully reimbursable, uh, for personnel that are going and for the backfilling of, of the time, if that's required. And then there's also a, uh, funding, uh, that if we deployed a brush truck, that the city would get reimbursed for that as well. Uh, the other thing with the Wildland Tech Gear is currently if we get something, whether it's, uh, grass fire or we're out on wrecks, they don't necessarily need to have bunker gear on, but that's what they're wearing because that's what they have. Uh, the tech gear can serve that purpose and keep them cooler. Uh, they can operate a little bit more efficiently, uh, reduces injury from, uh, heat and strain. And, uh, the other benefit of it is it doesn't follow the same NFPA requirements of a tenure replacement schedule, so it's as it wears out.
Flurries has one supplemental this year, uh, from the general fund. It has to do with our paving infrastructure, which is one of the largest assets the city has. It costs about one point five million dollars per lane mile, uh, to replace an asphalt street. Two hundred, two million dollars per lane mile for a, a concrete street. We have four hundred lane miles, about approximately half of them are asphalt. And so, we are requesting to add a new piece of equipment. It's a truck-mounted hot mix, uh, repair unit. Do they just re? Or a pothole patcher truck?
Pothole patcher truck. When I pass potholes through the highway department, we use the shovel.
Charlotte wants to go with the throw, throw and roll method.
I do. I roll, I use.
It's what we currently do.
We did that.
Martinville, Citizen Day, bring buckets. There you go. Get hot mix.
That's right. I worked for the highway department two summers. I know how to patch potholes. I like living in the eighties, so.
My god. I'm moving to this center.
Makes my kid like the eighties, living in the eighties.
The benefits gained, uh, from this is, uh, cost per ton for street repairs would be cheaper, and I have, I have some numbers here in a little bit. The repairs made with this machine are considered permanent rather than temporary. It's a self-contained, uh, motion automatic rejuvenator system. Uh, in layman's terms, that's, uh, you can get, uh, hot mix, uh, in this truck. You can leave hot mix in this truck overnight or a period of a couple of days, and it'll still be, uh, useful material instead of having to throw it away. Uh, our current, uh, method calls for purchasing and using RC two thousand oil and five-gallon buckets, and that's basically a five-gallon bucket that's full of, uh, petroleum oil. You take a mop or a broom after you dig your hole out and you swab the deck, so to speak, with the, with the emulsion or the oil.
Hard work never hurt anybody. I've patched some potholes.
Uh, continuing on, gained benefits, it's, uh, self-contained. It's a, it has a hydraulic jackhammer, it has haul-off boxes for spools. Uh, it's, again, the ability to keep leftover asphalt, uh, overnight. Um, and it, it can help with our strategic planning, uh, for street repairs, uh, long range, uh, street reconstruction, since this would be considered a permanent patch. Right now, our thinking is you can, you can push out, uh, street repairs as, as part of our, uh, PCI index, humid condition index program. And it would be helpful in emergency operations if we have a, uh, a disaster, which we've had in the past, room. Road, not particularly to, to repair a ro, a road that washes out, but, uh, potholes love rain and they love to become potholes after rain. So, right now, uh, to do a, a full depth repair, um, with our current equipment, and it's roughly costing us six hundred dollars per ton. Uh, that's, uh, equipment, labor, material, everything. And we use FEMA numbers because that's what we have plugged into our city works, workwork system. Uh, that's a hot patch. If we do a cold patch, uh, cold, uh, cold mix, which is in a bag or a bucket, it's roughly costing us three hundred and sixty-one dollars per. Our calculations show that with the, with the truck, um, we would save enough money, uh, in, uh, equipment and in labor and keeping material and making permanent repairs that we could shave that down to, um, one hundred and seventy-one dollars per ton. So, that being said, you know, if we do, uh, we're generally doing a hundred and fifty tons of cold patch a year and two hundred and fifty tons of, of hot mix a year. This piece of equipment, uh, which is valued at, uh, oh, we'll get to that. That being said, this piece of equipment, uh, would have a return on investment in about three and a half years. So, uh, continuing on, uh, revenue enhancements, uh, potential savings for the pothole repairs over throw and roll is roughly a hundred and ninety dollars per ton. Potential savings for a small full depth, uh, repairs is, is four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. This is your, your standard throw and roll. Uh, you see the guy with the, a bag of cold patch and then he puts it down, tams it in or rolls it in with the truck and you call it a day. That will fail within a matter of, the next rain, uh, or depending on how much traffic goes by. In that situation, it's alligator like that, there's some heavy traffic going by there or the base failure is taken. The truck, uh, has everything on it.
But wait, there's more. Look at this.
Say nothing when they have that big grenade launcher out there.
Yeah.
The truck is totally, I don't know, I'm, I'm about to shut up.
Don't ever say me this late.
The truck is, is totally self-contained, it has jackhammer. You jackhammer out, uh, your, your patch, uh, it has onboard emulsion, you spray it, and it has a hot mix, uh, that, uh, shoot, shoot out, uh, level it out, has a compactor, and then your patch, uh, your, your patch. So.
I just have to laugh because look how nice that one looks and then look at those. Okay, he's like, and then look, oh. Go back to the other one.
That's good, that's a hit mark.
Yeah. It is very.
You ever talk to a roofer?
I got one question.
That's where I learned this.
You just did two repairs of Highland Shore Boulevard where you had a grade all out there and you were going down six, eight, four inches. This doesn't do that. Uh, this is just where you got a good subbase.
Correct, you have to have a good subbase, um, which most of our, uh, we have a good, uh, um, um, replacement program to where we did redo the sub, subbases, subgrades, uh, so this is what we're transitioning to. It is a co-op purchase, it's available on co-ops, uh, so for a low, low price of two hundred and forty-three, six fifty-five.
You got a coupon?
You can have that.
Or you could have that if you dumped. Your choice.
And you, you believe that the savings, uh, the, the cost would be recouped in a three-year period timeframe?
That's the way, uh, that's the way we calculate it.
And what's the lifespan of the super awesome mostly whatever thing?
Uh, these pieces of equipment are, um, ten, twelve years before you have to start pulling maintenance on them and, and, and have your fifteen-year replacement. Kind of like a frozen precipitation, precipitation removal.
Frozen precipitation removal device. We have two. You only have one thing?
The general fund.
He was recalled.
Our turn.
I get to.
Utility fund.
I get to patch potholes if we get it. I get to be the first one to patch a pothole if we get it.
I request our first one for general fund. It's, uh, Unity Park, our building there, and our staff uses the athletics crew, unity crew. Uh, we have a new pickleball vendor that's taken over the small office there. Uh, it's gonna do some programming now on the new courts. And, uh, that's the only air-conditioned space that, uh, our guys had in that building. So, we're looking to put in a mini-split AC system in the other section of the building where they have all of their equipment, uh, tools stored, so that we still have, uh, an air-conditioned space out there. They, they, uh, this is one of our busiest parks, a lot of activity there. They stay on-site picking their rigs during the day. It's just better that they have a place where they can do that, Unity Park.
Does the new pickleball vendor pay rent?
We're, we're gonna have a contract with them and they'll pay us a percentage of their revenue. You know what the percentage is at?
Twenty percent.
They say twenty percent.
Of their revenue, which could help offset that cost, couldn't it? Or is that factored in another income? I'm just asking.
Yeah, it's, we didn't really factor that in the pay for this. There's revenue coming back in.
It goes to, yeah.
It goes to recreation, but not.
Roundabout kind of way. Not get a roundabout.
Touche.
Go back in the dental.
Too soon.
Touche.
Staying on the pickleball theme, uh, we think we've received several requests from the pickleballers at Unity Park to install some shade structures next to the courts. The way the, the setup works there is players rotate on and off the courts, especially during peak hours. So, there's always people off to the side waiting to get on the courts. And they've asked if we can install a couple of shade structures with bleachers so that there's a waiting area for those players and spectators.
Oh, so this is not over the court?
It's, it'll be, it'll be next to the court, just outside the fence. This is what it would look like, just a couple of, uh, shade structures, a concrete pad, bleacher area for people to wait.
So. Look to our storms.
Well, they, these are normally, uh, the ones I, I get with this company. They usually say they're rated for up to ninety mile per hour winds.
What about the baseball-sized hail? That's more right, the baseball-sized hail.
Baseball-sized hail, that's a good, that's a good question.
It's gonna ruin everything.
Man, I don't know if you get it.
It'll ruin everything.
Uh, yeah, I don't know.
About being an insurance claim.
I'd say they'll bounce off of it, and it's, ice is probably the biggest risk.
Is, is our, are most of the pickleball players Highland Village people?
I think they come from all over, to be honest.
Yes.
Who's the? What are the, what are the current structures at Unity Park, the baseball fields?
The current structures?
Yeah, shade structures for the bleachers. There's some of them have covers. On them. Are they, are they metal or are they this, this style?
They're fabric like this.
They are. So, it's consistent with what's in the park?
Yes, it is.
We want it to be unity.
That's the hope.
This is, uh, I think I had on the slide here. Their, their structures have a twenty-year warranty on framework, ten-year on the fabric. Because of course, the limits of working, you know, sometimes, uh.
Oh, so they're the same thing that's a.
Baseball-sized hail made up.
Splash pad.
Big square once again.
Yeah, yeah, I see.
They're similar to splash pads.
Okay.
Structures do.
So, the closest shade structure is where the.
Softball field and the baseball field.
Yeah, it's in the middle, the middle part, yeah. So, there is nothing, we're just looking.
Yeah, around the pickleball course, there's no shade. Looks like this was a citizen request that we look into.
I remember being out in the building and we had to wait in vehicles in between pulling fire trucks. We didn't have shade.
That's right.
We did not.
Man, and that was a beautiful vehicle I waited in with beautiful air conditioning, wonderful.
Next, we have, uh.
That's right.
Project we're recommending for, uh, also there's a citizen concern about the, the forested area of Village Park. Village Park is next to the, the Rolling Hills.
Is that your request, Sean?
Uh, no, but I like it because, I mean, no, the concern is there's a lot of kids that go hiking back there. I haven't been back there in a while because obviously we're, we're, but, um, there's trails, they go bike riding. It's by a park and if there's dead trees, obviously there's potential of those trees falling.
Oh, this is the one that's on by, by the pond?
Yeah.
It needs to be cleaned up. It's across the road.
Yeah, what about, we just did a cleanup with the Boy Scouts in, um, the foresty area of Somer, Highland Village Road. Did they need a service project?
Wichita Forest?
Yeah, we did. Not a cleanup cleanup, but they did an underbrush and they cleaned up some stuff and they had a workday out there.
Did they call a corps?
I guess, remember, they were, I know, it was because it was early on a Saturday and I don't get up early.
Wichita Forest, we did, we did have a volunteer group, did, it was not anything to this extent.
I just didn't know if the Boy Scouts needed something to do.
Well, yeah, I think this is a little more than they.
That is, like.
We have some pretty large dead trees in there, a lot of them brushed, uh, you can see how it's encroaching on the fence line.
If we were to do that, would you, could you add this to the maintenance rotation?
Yeah, once, yeah, once we get where it should be.
It'll look like once across the street.
Right.
Yeah, Public Works did a simple project on the other side of.
Are you hiring?
I think that's why we started getting.
I think this is a good team.
We wanted to live up to thirty-two thousand.
I'm on a management team with Mayor Charlotte. I'm just going right there.
It was a lot more than that, yeah.
I'm gonna supervise.
What is it?
I thought we agreed whenever we were going through this a couple of weeks ago that you would lead the way with the chainsaw.
I'm not going in there. I'm not going in any forest like that.
Not be birds in there.
Not be birds, that's exactly right.
Snakes.
Uh, last one I had on this is, uh, requesting an office remodel at nine forty-eight where Parks Recreation Offices are. This office, this next to the pickleball area. This space, we're currently not using it for an office. It was originally meant to be an office for a, a senior program coordinator. It's not really used for that, it's not really located in a good place for, uh, what we need. We're wanting to move our, our park superintendent and our park supervisor out there to that office area, remodel where it's not just glass, but have solid walls, solid doors, so it's not a, a check-in area. It's more usable office space. And, uh, the space that those two people are in now, we would move our admin to that area so she has a more private area to work, she's away from the chaos of that front desk area. We've added some new employees recently in that front, front desk area is pretty crowded. We just need a little space, we need something that's a little more workable and possible. Again, this is what the office looks like now. We would bring the wall out, this, this far out, solid sheet rock wall, solid door, so it's not see-through. Currently, uh, the public, when they come in, you know, it's not a very private area. It's, it's very open to the public coming in and also going in out of pickleball. It's also very noisy right now next to that pickleball court.
What is the original purpose of that office?
It was meant to be for, uh, the senior, senior programmer.
It wasn't originally, it was not an office, it was an open area.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because it looks like, because it's got two windows and the whatevers.
We had one of our part-time people using that office at one time and it came along because we had, we had some people coming in that, you know, she would kind of isolate it out there and she didn't feel safe.
It's official.
So, she's been moved back into the front desk area. That office is currently not.
It's an even bigger eyesore in prison. Picture doesn't do it justice.
And how did, that's a, that seems like a. And how did, that's a, that seems like a lot per square footage for a hundred and fourteen thousand.
The number, Scott helped us with that.
I mean, that's like.
I'm not sure.
A thousand dollars a square foot.
It's a small project, it's gonna be, no economy of scale. If you go with that, hundred and fourteen, it's, you know, you're gonna get a small contractor that is gonna load all that and give you change. We have recommended as. Not, not to Ford his, his recommendation, his proposal, but we have a CIP. Which has some building, maintenance, building upgrades to be funded sometime in the future. We would see.
It's okay. It's, it can't be.
Thanks Scott, I appreciate that. Could be an option too.
Nobody, it's ten thirty.
There's a crowd waiting.
And then we have, we have a couple of requests from the recreation side on that.
Like a stand-up, do jumping jacks or something?
Yeah, do some recreation real quick.
Okay, so my first one is for the teen event. The goal is to establish a permanent annual event for the teens. This was brought up in Parks and Recreation's space master plan in twenty twenty-three. Teens desired an event specifically to their age group. We did the bonfire this past year and it was highly successful. So our goal will be light to continue offering that to begin next year. And some additional offerings would be DJ, outdoor and indoor games, hayrides, selfie station, food trucks, bonfire smores, giveaways, and a grass bash volleyball tournament. It's what we've kicked around so far. If this was.
Somebody's a grass bash.
What's a grass bash?
Volleyball on grass. It's really popular with high school kids, according.
Wow, okay. Is that what tore up the, is it Doubletree Ranch Park, remember?
Oh, when they played in the mud.
When they played, yeah. May or may not. We won't do a grass bash in the mud.
We'll do it in between the trees.
I'd like to see more than one event a year for our teens.
We did try, well, the PG thirteen movie, we were trying to market it to them and we can try that again. We're open, there was a silent disco recommendation, so definitely open to additional events as well. And then we're asking for a part-time recreation assistant that will provide support to recreation staff due to the increased programming rentals to vault center usage. This would help with admin tasks, program registration, processing reservations, front counter customer service, answering phones and emails. And assist with senior programming, special events, senior newsletters, errands and supply runs. This would be three days a week for four hours, or twelve hours.
And so, so it's kind of a, another slide that's representing, you know, our base budget for twenty twenty-six. Where we're imposing a deficit of one point nine million and bringing down our fund balance to thirty-five. Just as a reminder, our policy is to stay within the twenty to twenty-five percent of expenditures. And then on the other column, it's with the supplemental quests. So that would bring our deficit up to two point five million and give us a thirty-two percent. And so with that said, I know last, or I think I remember last year, we had sent over the supplemental request to you to approve or deny them through a spreadsheet and we'll do that again this year, just so that we can get.
So we want to stay in the twenty, twenty-five percent, but at this point we're at the thirty-two percent.
Right.
If anything was included.
Yeah, but that, that drains our, I know we're high at forty-six, but that's a thirty percent hit in one year.
Right.
And we're in a build-out.
Gosh, guys, sorry. Heather just pulled the plug on all your supplementals.
I do too.
Well, in two years, we're down to twenty-five percent.
Right, so here's our next, our five-year outlook.
In a roundabout kind of way.
So.
Yeah, like. Down two years, we're down.
Twenty-nine, we'll be at the twenty. Yeah.
And we can't.
Wow.
I think we need to look at each one and I think.
Think long and hard because at some point in time, we're more gonna be in a maintenance mode than adding stuff mode. And, and I know we have money that goes to the four B, but at some point the citizens might wanna shift it to something else. I mean, the more we add, the more we maintain.
That's a pot that.
What'd you say, John, I didn't hear what you said.
Well, no, she said we've gotta look at the four B. I mean, we've talked about it, I mean, four B is half, half a penny. DCTA money, one point nine million a year. And according to Heather, we owe four point eight million on her bond. So after four point eight million, then there's one point nine that's already allocated, take a vote.
Four point nine on which bond?
Huh?
Four point nine on which bond?
On the four Bs. That's, and the debt's paid off and we're generating one point nine a year, take out operation expenses. We don't need to build more trails. So there's an opportunity in a couple of years to look at adding almost ten percent to our revenue without going out. We go for an election to reallocate the money, but the money's there and we'll get that sooner and we'll get the CTA money.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, we really need to, with our trails, as much as we love them, we need to get in a maintenance mode because the more stuff we add on the ground, the more stuff we have to maintain and it's, it's just a never-ending cycle.
Right, we can't build new stuff that eats.
Well, I definitely think that's a conversation that needs to take place, but probably not, it's not a ten-third.
Yeah.
Okay. So you are gonna send out a thing for all the supplements?
Yes, yeah, so that you can. So we finished the general fund budget presentation. Our next item will be the special revenue funds on July twenty-second. We'll also approve the four B budget and the CIP. August twelfth, we'll have a utility fund and we'll consider a tax rate and budget amendments. Then on the twenty-sixth, we'll do a follow-up on the general fund. If it's needed or any other follow-ups that would be required. Oops, I'm sorry, this, this is typo, this had moved back. The, the certificates of obligation series twenty twenty-five authorized issues, that would be on September ninth instead of the August twenty-sixth. And then we'll also on September twenty-ninth, have a public hearing for the adoption of our budget and tax free rate for the first read and then the second read on September sixteenth. And that will conclude the budget session.
I wanna go to the four B budget and I know we don't wanna go in big depth, but like we said last year, it's a rush. You're on the four B and you're like, okay, we need to approve it 'cause it's gotta go to council to approve. And at some point in time, we need to have a discussion on, have a, a gap to where you can see what's coming versus what you're gonna vote on. We just have an hour to look at it. And if we're gonna try to, again for next year, go to maintenance mode versus build all new stuff mode, that's rushing it for, for the four B. And, and that's a complaint I've heard two years in a row. Is that you tell them at four thirty, you need basically approval and we have a council meeting at seven. And that's not right, I don't think it's right. How do we, how do we fix that?
We'd have to somehow figure out a time and it'd be tough this year, but try to figure out a time to meet before that time and then have a kind of a follow-up at that meeting.
Because we can't have these discussions because they're wanting to float new bonds.
In all fairness though, the four B hasn't had meetings for several years.
Right, no, they haven't.
One a year.
It's been one a year and that's been the complaint. It's one a year, approve the budget, move on and.
Nothing to been, and been in the four B that needs to be done in years past. This is the first year, so it's, it's a learning year for four B overall, but it's an opportunity, you're right, I, we need more time.
It's the, let's not talk about passing new bonds for four B until we have a, a discussion on, let's stop passing bonds for four B so we can get in a maintenance mode, in my opinion.
So maybe it doesn't need new bonds, pay off the ones we got.
I, I a hundred percent agree, but there's other people that think we need, the minute it's paid off, we need more, more, more. And I just think that's, we don't need to be there, but that's my opinion based on where we're at and looking at those numbers.
We have a lot of discussions that need to happen with our penny.
Yes.
Good start tonight.
Not just four B, it's, it's all of it together.
Oh, I know, I know.
And we can do a workshop.
I, I think.
Is there, so obviously we need to put that on future agenda items.
We need to put that on the future agenda and, and, and maybe, I don't know what the four B budget's looking like, but, I mean, if there's any more bonds, I just think we need to hold off until we get our hands around not having any money in five years.
Yeah, there's, there's no recommendation by now to do more.
Okay, all right.
It's all planned for the future.
I, yeah.
Anybody else have anything for future agenda items?
I do, yes. So I would like to add a future agenda item in to develop a community outreach strategy that includes communication and community meetings outside of council agendas that notify citizens and have a workshop or whatever when we are making any changes to their neighborhood, be it streets, sidewalks, trails, whatever. I think we need to go beyond it's on the city council agenda and there needs to be more of a, a structured communication outreach plan. So we do on the front end get communication and not on the back end. And it, I would, I would like, that's first, one. And number two, I don't know if this is an agenda item thing, but you said, you can go back and look at our agendas and look at our meetings. The one thing that lacks in our agenda that most cities include in the agenda are the presentations that will be had at the meeting. If we included those inter-agenda packets, those slides and everything that's presented, the citizens can look at the agenda and see what's being presented instead of waiting till after the meeting to see what's being presented. And most cities include all of that in their agenda packets. And I think that would go a long way to communicate with our residents.
Yeah, I would just say that I, I don't disagree with doing that, but the difficulty is we're working on those sometimes till the very end. If you were to do anything, you would have to be preliminary, subject to change because.
I, that would be better than just like the whole, we could avoid it a, maybe this whole roundabout thing if we just had a schematic included in the packet. But all the packet gives us is words and people don't read all the words or understand the words or know what's going on or the nuances. And so they can see a meeting after the fact that, then they, and they can't speak. So I would suggest somehow we include something, even if it's a rough draft or pick just overall schematics. Maybe not the details, but a schematic or something that's typical of most cities. I think it would go a long way with communicating with the residents.
We also have to realize that we can furnish everything. They're the ones, the residents need to be the ones to look at that.
Oh, I understand that.
And that's the, we have to keep pushing that out and I think we do a great job of that, you know? We've got, we tell them, look at the apps, go to the website, do, look at our Facebook page and all that stuff. I don't disagree, I think putting something in there, I'm a visual learner, I need to see it and not read about it. So that would help me, but, but I, I think we also have to continue to tell our residents, look, these things get posted on Friday, the agendas get posted on Friday, look at it, look at, or, or call us and say, hey, what's coming up?
Oh, I agree, I just, when we're making changes, some kind of outreach or something to those residents or through the HOA, going one step and just the immediate area because everyone's busy and everyone, and, and just that one step or even having something on our website that says this is the specific on this, so they can get more involved than reminding.
Suggestion. That her request is to have it on a future agenda item that we can have this discussion.
Yes, yes, you're right, see? See? See?
So tonight's agenda.
That's why we're neighbors, that's why we're council neighbors.
Okay, anybody else got anything? If not, we are adjourned at ten forty. Right, if not, we are adjourned at ten forty.